And welcome to the City of Pocatello Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June 12th, 2024. The Planning and Zoning Committee is a citizen volunteer advisory group to the city council. We are charged with making recommendations concerning land use plan, planning processes, and/or matters of plan implementation. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been available to everyone. When we do have a public hearing, citizens will be able to come forward. Just so you know, the way the sign-up sheet is going to work, because we don't want somebody who's talking on Agenda Item Number Six to be signing up before somebody talks on Agenda Item Number One, that way we can keep track for the minutes. So you will line up and you will sign right before you speak. Do not pass it around the audience, please. Leave it. I want one person talking, the next person has it. When they come up to talk, hand it to the person behind you. That's what will make this go easiest. Aislinn, will you call roll?
Here, and I viewed all the properties, and I have nothing to disclose.
Here, I did site visits for Agenda Item Three, Five, and Six, and I have nothing else to disclose.
Here, and I did site visits to Agenda Item Number Three, Five, and Six, and I have nothing further to disclose.
Here, I did site visits on Agenda Items Three, Five, and Six. I have nothing else to disclose.
Here, nothing to disclose.
Thank you. So, oh, sorry.
Here, site visits were made to Three, Four, Five, and Six, and I have nothing to disclose.
Agenda Item Number Two is approval of the minutes. The commission may wish to waive the oral readings of the P&amp;Z clarification, regular and special meeting minutes held on May 1st and May 9th, 2024, to approve the minutes as written. Commission, how would you like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
One second.
I have a motion by Phillips and a second by Guyer. Aislinn, will you call vote? Yes. Guyer?
Yes.
Artu?
Yes.
Chanda? Yes. Fenwick? Yes.
Fry? Yes.
I guess we'd like to tell everybody, we are doing our best up here to make sure that we can pay attention to the applicant, to the staff, be able to talk to each other. I would really appreciate it if we would keep talking to a minimum in the audience, and please turn all your cell phones off. Agenda Item Number Three is a public hearing for Zone Map Amendment File 24-1200. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a Zone Map Amendment application by D.W. Investors LLC, represented by Dakota Worrell, to rezone the property located at 864 East Poplar Street from residential medium-density single-family to residential commercial-professional. And at this time, I would invite the applicant to come forward. Dakota not here? All right. I guess with that, I would invite staff to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Oh, I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Jim Anglesey, long-range planner for the City of Pocatello. Before you is an item to rezone the property known as 864 East Poplar Street. Many will know that's the defunct grocery store Kegaru's at the corner of Jefferson and Poplar. The request is from D.W. Investors LLC to rezone the property from RMS to RCP. The site is currently here on the map, as you see here. Again, the zoning is currently RMS, which you see in the yellow, and the applicant is wishing to have it rezoned as RCP that you see in the purple. This change is compliant with the comprehensive plan. As you see here on the map, the purple represents the plan designation of mixed-use, and the yellow represents residential under the designation. Staff concludes that the proposed zoning map amendment is compliant with Pocatello City Code Section 1702-170E. Currently, the applicant does not have any concrete plans on what he wants to do, but he wants to have a flexibility in a mix of commercial and residential on that corner. As far as notification goes, signs were posted on the property on May 28th, 2024, within the 15 days required by Idaho State Code, and all property owners within 300 feet of the external boundaries of the property have been properly noticed. And staff has received no written comment regarding this proposal. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
So Dakota stated in his application, he discussed mixed-use and multifamily being near this place. Am I correct that those would be on the east side of Jefferson, not on the west side of Jefferson?
Correct. So on the map here, there's already been a proposal and permits to have multifamily on this, on the east side of Jefferson, and the applicant owns that property as well.
My other question would be, I know that is a tricky intersection, trying to come off Poplar, turn left or right, and I wonder if we do multifamily in that lot? Is there another approach? Could it be allowable on Jefferson? Is it feasible on Poplar? I mean, I guess, no matter what goes in there, we're going to need an approach, and that's going to be tricky. But if there's multiple cars coming and going... Okay, here's my question. Does the zone change from residential medium, single-family to residential commercial-professional? Is that going... Is there a large difference in the amount of cars that will access the property?
From the subject property that we're talking about, this rezone here?
Correct.
It's very limited space. If he utilizes the existing building, it essentially doesn't have any parking on-site, and so we'd have to locate that at an additional site within 500 feet, or figure out another configuration. If he does, if he does figure out a configuration that allows for parking on-site, it would have to come off of the alleyway. And so, more than likely, we, any new development, we wouldn't allow any ingress or egress on that corner of Jefferson.
Commission, any other questions for staff?
On this one.
All right. Thank you very much. Oh, Aislinn, I don't have my cheat sheet. So at this time, I'm going to open... I'll probably be okay. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you would like to comment on this, please start lining up. You need to make sure you sign your name before you speak, and then pass it to the person behind you. Please don't pass it any further than that. It's just to help us keep track. So right now, I would like it to open up to anybody in favor of the application. Anyone uncommitted? Anyone opposed? We should just do this all night long.
We should.
Will you make sure and sign in? We won't start your time till you're done.
My name is Michael Sampson, 193 Charles Place, and I'm concerned or confused a little bit. This is where the old grocery store is. Is that where we're talking about that only, that corner?
Correct.
Is that correct on that? Like I said, I'm very concerned about the traffic flow and what's going to go there, especially with the agenda that we're going to be discussing later this evening, because that's the same intersection that's going to take the brunt of most of the traffic for that new subdivision that they're proposing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed?
I'm not really opposed, but because that building's been empty for like 30 years and...
Will you state your name, please?
Victor Watts.
Thank you.
It's been empty for like 30 years, and the ceiling in there is... I can't even walk in there. So if that building's torn down and anything's put in there, I'd be for it, but I think you'd have to talk to traffic or something about safety, because if they're thinking about walking across Jefferson, that's not going to work. And the stop sign's not there. It's one block down, so you can't... There was a... There used to be a gas station there, so, you know, both of those businesses basically failed because you can't stop there.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed? No? All right. The applicant's not here, so there's no rebuttal. Commission, do you have any further questions for staff or any discussion? I would just like to state that obviously, traffic is going to be a concern, as it would be with anything along Jefferson, and that's something that will obviously... Thank you. Come into place as they, as they develop it, and they have to put in for those type of permits, things that will be addressed. And other than that, I would, unless you have any more discussion or questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to move to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment application from D.W. Investors LLC to rezone Point 01... Or, I'm sorry, Point 18 acres, more or less known as 684 East Poplar Street, from residential medium-density single-family, RMS, to residential commercial-professional, RCP. Finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.170E of Pocatello City Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report, and authorize the chair to sign findings of fact and recommendation.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Fenwick and a second by Fry. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Second by...
Fry?
Yes.
Yes.
Artu?
Yes.
Chanda? Yes. Guyer?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
All right. Public hearing closed. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is a public hearing for the preliminary plat File 24-480. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a preliminary plat application request by Rockwell Homes Incorporated, represented by Owen Campion of Sunrise Engineering. The proposal calls to subdivide 6.94 acres, more or less, into 28 single-family lots. The subdivision is known as Western Skies Division Four and is located west of I-15 and north of Western Skies Division Three subdivision. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open, and I will invite the applicant to come forward. You're not Owen, so we're going to need you to tell us your name.
Yes, I will. My name is David Hassan. I work with Sunrise Engineering. I'm standing in for Owen today. So Rockwell Homes have a property that is north of the current property of Western Skies Division Three. That is Western Sky Division Four. In this phase, it's 6.94 acres to be subdivided into 28 homes. It's going to be an extension of Marinous Lane and Grassland Road, and it has water, sewer, and storm subbed into the existing utilities that we have on-site. We are going to provide an additional stormwater pond at the end of Marinous Lane to be carried on to the future Jasmine Estates. So basically, that's what this subdivision, this division of the subdivision is about. It's just a continuation of Western Sky Division Three.
Commission, any questions for the applicant? Nope. Okay. We might have questions later. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite staff to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, commission members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. The request before you is for preliminary plat approval of a subdivision as, to be known as Western Skies Division Four. The proposal calls for the plating of 6.94 acres, more or less, into 28 single-family lots. The subject property is owned residential medium-density single-family, which requires that a minimum square footage be maintained of 5,000 square feet. The smallest lot entails 5,525 square feet in area. The proposed subdivision extends Marinous Lane 300 feet, more or less, northwest from Western Skies Division Three subdivision to Jasmine Estates. Grassland Road will be extended to the west from Marinous Lane, approximately 994 feet, connecting to a temporary turnaround. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing property boundaries have been provided notice of the, of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal on May 12, 2024, and a sign was posted on the subject property on May 28, 2024. All notices herein described have been provided at least 15 days prior to the public hearing. At the time of completion of this report, no comment from the public has been received, neither in support nor in opposition to the application. Staff finds that the proposal is compliant with all standards of City Code 1620.050, condition, with the four conditions as outlined in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, commission. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commission, any questions for staff? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much. So at this time, I would like to invite anybody in favor of the application to come forward? Anyone uncommitted? Anyone opposed? Will you go ahead and sign in for us? And then we'll start your time.
My name is Tom Valentine. The last guy wasn't even timed. The guy before him had 10 minutes, and you're going to give me three?
Yep. You only get three minutes, and that's why everybody's giving some testimony.
Okay. So I don't understand what you're talking about, because you're not showing us on a map exactly where these are.
That's up to the applicant to provide us a map if they want to. So if you'd like to see a map, you can look at the agenda that's available online.
I've seen the map of the whole area.
Okay.
And then you're talking an agenda to each different area of that, of that map? Is that what you're doing?
So we have five different, six different agenda items tonight, and so right now, we are particularly talking about Western Skies Development.
Where's that at?
Which is up by Interstate 15. There's a map of it in the agenda.
Okay. So any of these are going to affect the traffic on Lakeview Drive and on Ammon?
Sir, that's a different agenda item. This one we'll...
Oh, well, God, okay. Jesus, sorry, getting the wrong agenda. But no matter how you look at it, we're going to be affected, and the rumbling of the trucks and everything else is going to affect us, and nobody wants to deal with it.
I don't know. We haven't got there yet.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else opposed? Come on up, sign in, sign your na... Sign your name and state it, please. And I would just like to clarify, we are in Agenda Item Number Four. This is up by the flying Y.
Oh, that's what I wanted to know. If you could give me some, if you could just give me some markers.
State your name, please.
Carol Gold.
Carol what?
Gold.
Okay.
And I just wanted to, if you could give me some markers, because we're, we're having a lot of building on the west side of the freeway that's up my area, but I was just wondering, could you give me some markers where am I?
Yeah, this is of the flying Y, if we're looking at it. This is on the southwest side of the flying Y.
Southwest side of the flying Y. Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else opposed? Applicant, do you have any rebuttal? Okay. All right. With that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Commission, how would you like to proceed?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the preliminary plat application from Rockwell Homes, Inc., for the Western Skies Division Four subdivision, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 16.20.050 Pocatello Municipal Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report. Let's see, I lost my place. Did we have any findings? I've lost my train of thought entirely.
Just as listed in the... And for me to sign them.
Great. And I authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
Second.
I have a motion by Fenwick and a second by Phillips. Aislinn, will you call vote? Yes. Phillips?
Yes.
Artu?
Yes.
Chanda? Yes. Fry?
Yes.
Guyer?
Yes.
All right. So I just want to go through, I know we're getting to the meat of the agenda here, and I just want to go through a full, a few rules to make sure that everybody understands what's going on. The applicant's presentation is limited to 10 minutes, and then anybody providing public testimony is limited to three minutes. Those that are presenting or testifying, please make sure you sign your name, and then state your name, and please do not pass that sheet around. It should be just one person behind the person that's up here. If we keep going, we're going to go faster. I know none of us want to be here super, super late, and if we are still here at 8 o'clock, we will take a break for us, and you guys will have to wait for that 10-minute break. So if I feel like we're getting close, we will skip that break, but let's just be respectful for everybody's time. And at this, and at that same time, I want to remind you guys, we're volunteers. We're here to help you guys. We are not the city. We are not voted into our roles. We volunteer. So be respectful, be nice to us, and, because we are here to listen to you. That's what we're here for. I want to remind you that when you're giving testimony or asking questions, comments, they have to be pertinent to the application, and should only be addressed by the commission. So we don't want any of you answering or talking about anything, anything else to somebody else. There should be no questions or comments or applause from the audience. So unless you're at that microphone, have signed in and stated your name. We don't want to hear anything from you. And then if it goes later than 8 o'clock, then we will take a break, if we feel like that's what's needed at the time. I want to remind you that we will make our decisions regarding the application and the facts that are on hand. And, and then one more thing before we open this public hearing. There have been a lot of information out there on social media that is not 100% true. We are going to get to the bottom of that today and make sure you guys all understand that. But I'm going to start by letting the Planning and Development Chair?
Director.
Director. But I'm going to start by letting the Planning and Development Chair, Director, just clarify a few things for you guys.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Brent McLean. I'm the Planning and Development Services Director for the City of Pocatello. And I wanted to make a few comments prior to the public hearing to address a couple of the items that have been discussed regarding this application. There's been a social media storm related to this proposed project. And I want it to be clear that I'm fully supportive of residents and citizens voicing their concerns and disapprovals. We want that. We want to hear those comments. Unfortunately, there have been a bevy of lies, misinformation, and accusations related to the development proposal. City staff has been nothing but transparent by providing application materials and answering questions. There has not been any element of this proposed development that is contrary to established laws. Every private property owner has a right to seek to utilize their property according to the established laws. And that is exactly what this property owner is doing. The city staff is tasked with processing that application and presenting real facts and how those facts relate to established laws to the Planning Commission. And that is where we are today. There's some misinformation that has been circulating that I want to address and make clear. First, Ammon Park is not being developed into housing. Ammon Park is remaining Ammon Park. Second, the city is not donating any land for this development. Public improvements to city land are part of the proposal, and the city will retain ownership of all Ammon Park and any improvements made on city property. Third, the mayor has not been involved with any portion of this development, and the final decision of this proposal will be made to the city council at a future, yet to be determined, date. The city has followed the laws for public noticing as established by the state. This law has been established for decades and is what is practiced throughout the state by all cities and counties. I want to make it clear for everyone what this process for the application looks like. Tonight, the Planning Commission will look at facts provided by the applicant, city staff, and public testimony. Based on the facts provided, the Planning Commission will then make a recommendation to the city council regarding this application. If the applicant chooses to move forward following this recommendation, the application will then be scheduled to be heard by the city council. It is the city council that will make the final decision. A public notice will be sent regarding the city council meeting in the same manner as outlined by Idaho Code. I appreciate all those who have reached out to our department in an effort to find out truth and factual information. And I want to be clear that this proposal is not a development of Ammon Park. Ammon Park is not going to turn into housing, and I want to make sure that is clear. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will declare the public hearing open, and at this time, I would invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, Commission Members. My name is Joel Dixon. I'm with Knudsen Engineering, 609 West Maple Street, Pocatello, Idaho 83201, representing the applicant CMJ Holdings LLC for their application of a planned unit development for Park Place Townhomes. So a little bit about the project is that we are on about 10.3 acres of land, and we are proposing 86 new townhome units. Currently, the project is zoned residential medium-density multifamily, and that was rezoned early 2023. For the existing portions of the site, let's see, get me a little laser pointer. So for the existing portions of the site, we have some existing drainage paths that come from the east side of the interstate, and they converge and cross our property. There's two of them here on the north side. And then south of our property, over by the southeastern portion of the park, there's another crossing under the interstate. All three of these drainage paths, which I have in Cyan, come together and drain to the current retention area in Ammon Park. Ammon Park was the latest, or the earliest imagery that I have was from 1959, and Ammon Park was built then. And these historical drainage paths have existed for millennia before then. So we do have that existing encoverance to address in our proposal. There are a series of utilities that cross our property. They are City of Pocatello utilities. This one right here is the water line that bisects our property. There's a PRV station and some other appurtenances down here. And then that goes to the east and to the west. There's a sewer line that services these three apartment buildings that goes south through the property, hits a manhole, and then goes west where it connects with other sewer lines and then eventually up to the treatment plant. Also is an existing structure on the site. It's a shed kind of for storage and equipment right now as part of our proposal. We are going to take that down, and it will be replaced with a clubhouse for use of the project residents. And it will have offices for the rental management. It'll have an exercise area and some other features that I'll talk about a little bit later. Our project will have water, sewer, and storm lines. So those drainage paths I mentioned earlier come out through here. They will go into a small detention area and then go into our storm lines. And then from there, it'll go down through this, or from here, it goes straight across into the central ponds where there will be some storage there. Once those are full, they will go through a culvert and a pipe and just in a series, go all the way down through some more pipes, then over to what we're calling our southern pond. And once that is full, that will overflow then to Ammon Park. So right now, there's about two to three feet of effective pondage in that corner of Ammon Park, after which it just drains out here to the northwest and dissipates is what it historically looks like. So with our road that we're proposing, that will kind of raise the edge of that pond. And so we are going to increase the size of the Ammon Park retention area. And there's a couple of reasons for that. A lot of our runoff in the development is held in our interior ponds, but they do discharge to the historical path, which ultimately ends up in this area. We believe, based on the basins from the east of the interstate, our development, Ammon Park, that this pond is, in a very large storm event, is not sufficiently sized. So we will be increasing that to handle, to better handle the existing runoffs and for our runoff to discharge into. Another part of our proposal is the connectivity. This is kind of what we believe is the biggest asset for this project. Our road will come in off of Ammon Park, extend all the way through the site to this intersection, and then up Lakeview Drive, and then will tie into the existing end of Lakeview Drive that's been there since the early 60s and hasn't seen any development. So this will create a connection between the Ammon Park neighborhood and the Lakeview Drive neighborhood that doesn't exist before. This will increase the availability for residents of this area to access Ammon Park without having to trespass through property or go to the west all the way down to Hyde or some of the other roads down in that area and over to Ammon Park that direction. So it's a lot more of a direct route that will be available for foot traffic and for vehicles. Additionally, these paths create an additional route for traffic. Right now, there's only one exit out of this Ammon Park area, and there's also only one exit from the Grove Apartments in Lakeview areas. This will, in the event of either an emergency, road work, or just if the roads are busy, it gives another avenue for residents of the city and of the neighborhoods to get to and from. Our project does have some extra open space based off of what the requirements for this zoning is. We have just about four acres of open space. And what we've done is tried to place them in around the exteriors of the site so we can blend in with the topography, also give us some access for trails. And in this area here, there's retention areas, but there will probably also be some interior trails that go back and forth between these two roads and some benches for residents to sit at. Our project features multiple different floor plans. So we have some two-story units, a three-story unit. We have three-bedroom, two-bedrooms. And what this does is it allows us flexibility on the site. There's a lot of topography here. And by having these two- or three-story buildings, we can limit our grading efforts and try to marry into the existing topography instead of grading even more. So some of our units have a walk-in garage, and then there wouldn't be any access to the backyard from the main level. You'd go up to the second story, and then you'd actually exit into the backyard area through the second story. This helps limit grading and limits additional retaining walls that would be necessary. We also have a variety of different front facades on the project that will try to limit how repetitive everything is through this area. The clubhouse, which I mentioned earlier, will be put on this area of the site nearby the original shed. We are proposing some off-street parking. That will need to go through a council exception, as it's not part of city staff or city standards. If we move forward from this process, we will actually ask the city council for that exception. So Ammon Park upgrades. We are proposing some additional upgrades to the park. I've already mentioned the pond that we're doing here. We are also putting pedestrian ramps on Ammon Park. Right now, there's no sidewalk that crosses here, so by having a crosswalk and ramps, it'll give a place for pedestrians to use, and it'll keep vehicles in the places they should be. We also have a pavement, a paved access that comes up to the existing gravel area. This paved access will reduce dust from coming from the park area, which should help the surrounding neighbors. And we are also proposing some sort of amenity for the Ammon Park. We originally proposed to do a pickleball court. If the city Parks and Rec Department does not wish to have that, we could do a series of parking stalls or just, we will work with the Parks and Rec to make that happen. For architectural, here's an example of what the clubhouse elevations would look like. This is a 3D rendering of the site or of the buildings. And then we have the elevations for everything. That shows that you can have the walkout second story and where the garages are located. So for the code criteria, I'll try to wrap up quickly. We do meet all the criteria here except for item number three. We do not conform with the site disturbance area restraint. We have a kind of unique property here where we need to get two neighborhoods put together, and there's about 20 feet of elevation difference. So instead of having a very large...
That's time. Thank you.
...road, but that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
So at this time, the commission will be able to ask you a few questions. One question I have is on the parcel viewer map for Vanet County. It shows that the northernmost portion of the property that you have as a whole is owned by somebody else. Parcel, ending in 3608 is owned by CMJ, but right to the north of that and in between where the Grove Apartments are, 2602 is owned by the Grove Apartments. Can you speak to that, please?
So there are just two separate owners for those parcels. We recently did a property line adjustment that cleaned up these. There are some shared ownership for those. Why is that not going? Let me escape out of that. There we go. So there is some shared ownership from the LLCs, but they are owned by different entities. We, in the PLA, just kind of cleaned up the lines. They distinguished what CMJ owns and what Grove Apartments owns. So these are not together. They're completely different developments. You're referring to just this teeny area?
No, according, so where the clubhouse is?
So that in the PLA was changed to CMJ Holdings. So I think the parcel viewer is incorrect.
It's just not updated?
Yes.
Okay.
They did update it, but now that you mention that, yes, I think it is just an incorrect. It is actually dated to CMJ. And we've submitted the deeds to...
I'm getting head nods from staff that that's the case. Okay. And then another question I have. It looks like your, what you're calling South Pond goes over your property lines.
Yes. And so in the staff report, it does mention that we're going to extend this property line over here, create this as its own lot, and that will be turned over to the city.
So it still won't be on your property?
It will become city property.
Okay. The whole lot?
Just, yeah, that area right here.
Okay. Can you speak to, so I understand that you have two main drainage areas coming through this that we need to get to that pond? And then on top of that, you have your increased impervious area that makes more runoff?
Yeah.
Are you keeping all of that new runoff on your property?
No. There is a small portion of the runoff that will, that exceeds the capacity of these ponds. About, let's say, 20% or so would go into this area in the 100-year storm event. The majority of storms, it'll be just fine. But in that 100-year event, there's about 15%, 20% that would go into the Ammon Park area. At one point, we were looking at keeping the pass-through and our stormwater separate, but that doubled the amount, well, not doubled. It increased by almost double the amount of stormlines to keep them separate. So for the ease of installation, we just combined the off-site pass-through and our development. They all would have eventually ended up here anyway, because that's the historical retention area, but we've just combined them.
So I have a little heartburn with not defining an amenity. And I just think, I mean, I don't want to see a plastic little type slide thrown out there, and that's the amenity that's been provided by the developer. So I just think, Commission, like, it's up to us to define what that is or a cost for it, or it has to be a similar cost to what a pickleball court would be, or just something for you to think about. I guess that wasn't really a question.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
So the pickleball court proposal was never an actual requirement for it. We were wanting to put a pickleball court in our site. It would either have been in the central area and replace some of these ponds or back behind the clubhouse. But we were thinking there's a chance that in the future, the residents there just say, we don't want the general public to have access to this and close it off. And so by putting it in the park, it just cemented it for the general public's use. That's the reason why we were wanting to add something to Ammon. We don't need to. We just thought it would be...
I think it's a condition, isn't it? No?
It would just be an asset for the community. But we, I've heard a discussion about the Parks and Rec not wanting a pickleball court. I mean, we're fine with that. If the developers really want it, we'll put it on our site. If they don't, maybe we can work out something else.
Okay. Slope analysis. Your slope analysis that you provided does not cover the entire property. It cuts it, cuts it... It cuts it, cuts it short. And your table showing the areas is a little confusing. I would like some clarity on if you did an overall site analysis, how much area is in each of the groups? And how much of that cannot be developed? And what you're meeting, please?
So the reason why there's only partial colors, it's my little Easter egg map, is in the code, it states that we are only going to identify and factor into the calculations areas that not, have not already been previously disturbed. So I actually created, I was working with staff, a previous disturbance map or narrative that goes through how we established which areas had been disturbed and which ones hadn't been.
Okay. There's some discrepancy between your area and what the city's area is. How would you like to address that?
Could you clarify a little bit more about what the discrepancy is?
I believe that you, that the undisturbed should be 1.59 acres and you were requesting to leave it at 0.55 acres.
Okay. That is accurate.
And the 1.59 is based on what the city thinks was previously disturbed area as well?
Correct. That is correct. So the code and the standard for the site disturbance requires that one acre number. And we do not meet that. So what we're asking is some flexibility on that as part of the PUD process. It's the only criteria that we don't just outright are compliant to. And so we're asking the commission members to give us some flexibility on that one criteria. Because what we're trying to do is connect two different neighborhoods together. There's about a 25-foot elevation difference. So in order to get a road from point A to point B, it's got to be really long. Right now, we're at an 8% grade. The code will allow us to go up to 10% without getting another approval. So that pushes everything into those steeper areas. Additionally, the area of highest concentration in red is just right through where the road's going to be. So this area here is the largest portion of where we don't comply. And so as, as part of just what we've been trying to accomplish with connecting two neighborhoods, developing infill-like property that's been undeveloped for 60 years, that we're just asking for some consideration on that one thing, which I believe staff can confirm that was, is within your purview to allow. And that by doing what we're doing with park improvements and the goals that we're accomplishing for the city, we're, we just see that, hope that you would see that as being a worthwhile exchange.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. I, I could talk all night, but I'll give you guys a chance.
I would like to ask about the, the retention pond in Ammon Park. You mentioned it'd be bigger. How much bigger?
So it is a quite a bit larger. So it's about, let's see, five or six times larger than what it currently can hold. And part of that is the pond as it exists now for the drainage areas is woefully undersized. For a 100-year storm event that would come through east of the interstate and all of Ammon Park, plus the undeveloped portion of our property, it all historically drains there, it's not large enough. It wouldn't meet current standards. If this was a brand-new pond, 8,000's not going to cut it, even if our development didn't exist. And so we're bringing it up to what we've calculated is required, plus our development.
Are you going to be, you used the word increase size. Are you going to be making it bigger or just increasing capacity? Otherwise, are you going deeper and wider?
So we are definitely going, the, the bottom of the pond is staying the same.
Okay.
But the effective storage of water is increasing from about two to three feet to what code allows is the six feet at the max. And if I can zoom in here.
And that's through raising the road, correct?
Correct, yes. In order to get that road to connect with that 25 feet, we've got to come out here. We have our vertical curve and then we start increasing our slope. So just the fact of building the road builds half the pond already. And so what we're doing is we have, we're meeting the storm requirements, four-to-one slopes. We're actually designing the north end to be around a 10:1. So people can get in and out of it a lot easier because it is in a park area. So access is fairly important.
Any best management practices for these ponds? Because right now, there's nothing coming off streets that cars drive on. And now that stormwater will be going into these ponds.
So could you, sorry, could you read?
Any treatment before it is, goes into the ground?
So the sod, these, all the pond areas will be sodded, which does act as a pre-treatment. So there will be more pre-treatment than what's currently there. It's just native grasses. We're going to have a lot more vegetation for it to get some pre-treatment to before it ultimately settles here. All of our ponds act to slow down the water. So a drop of water from the east side of the interstate will come across to eastern pond and stop, slow down, drop out sediment. It'll overflow to this one, stop, drop out settlement and all the way down. So instead of just a continuous path, we have multiple stages where material can drop out before it ultimately ends up in Ammon Park.
Is there space between property lines either north or south of that? We all know those ponds need cleaned out regularly, that that can be done. Which might be something to think of.
Which pond, like here?
Yeah.
So this right here, I don't have the exact measurement, but that's probably around 40 feet or so.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I grew up in the Ammon Park area and until recently, did not realize that was a pond or what was considered a pond. In this construction, is the new pond going to be similar to what we're considering the current pond? A divot with grass over it? Is that what we're looking at?
It will be, I mean, it will be a retention pond. You will see that. The south side of the Ammon Park pond actually has quite a bit of elevation from where the, you can see this little solid gray line right here. That is approximately the top of the existing retention area. From there, though, it goes up another 10 feet. The water doesn't store that high because it drains out at the north. So what we're doing is our road is lower than where Ammon Road is. So, and we're just blending into the existing ground on the east side. So the biggest noticeable difference will be the installation of the road. We're trying, and then we're blending into the gravel access that's already there to the north. And we're trying to make that less steep.
So we're not looking at a large pit that's surrounded with concrete? A toddler's going to fall into and hurt themselves? We're looking at a slope, grass, the road is kind of the major elevation?
Correct. And the existing Ammon Park one is actually going to be the steepest portion of this recontoured pond.
I think we can all appreciate the slope there in the winter.
And so ours are all going to be at four-to-one slopes as opposed to two-to-one.
Thank you.
Eugene, any questions?
No, I don't.
Any questions? You said up to the six-feet depth, but of course, that's, you know, 100-year storm. Can you give us like a standard two-year, 24-hour storm? Any, I mean, I know, probably have, don't have the calculations memorized, but any, I just know the whole audience heard six feet and gasp. So we know we don't see those storms that often. So one of the more frequent storms, how much water are we expecting to see in it?
I can find that answer out and give it to you on the, I'd say, three to four feet. That's my guess. I can find out for sure in the rebuttal to confirm it. But a 100-year storm, way it's been explained to me is it's a 1% chance of happening every year. So it's only 1% likely it'll ever be six feet deep. And we are required to have it drain out between one and three days. So we have to, if the ground doesn't percolate fast enough, we have to either make it wider or we have to do some sort of changes or amendments to the soil to make it drain faster. There should never be standing, if there's standing water there, then something has gone wrong. But there should never be standing water.
What is the square footage of the clubhouse?
Let's take a look at the architectural. There we go.
While you're looking, you mentioned that the rental office would also be located in that same building. Is that correct?
Correct. A rental area, exercise area, and then just a meeting place for the residents. I'll have to find out. I don't see it off the top of my head what size that is.
That gives me a good idea, though.
But it's about 52 feet by 55.
52 by 55.
Any other questions for the applicant? Nope. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
At this time, I will invite staff.
Do you like me to leave some of this stuff up? Okay, I'll just take mine out.
And good evening, Madam Chair, Commission Members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the city. Have a, about a 10-slide presentation, just dealing with the, the planning end of it. Again, we're looking at the subject property, the proposed development. It's subject 10.24 acre parcel, plus or minus. Has never been owned by the city. It's always been private property. Again, for the record, the city is not donating any portion of Ammon Park for this project. The subject property encompasses, again, 10.34 acres more or less. The proposal before you is 86 townhome lots and two common open space lots for a total of 88 lots. The proposal does not call for the construction of apartments. Under code, under code, construction of apartments are permitted outright, up to 12 units an acre without subdividing. I think that's an important point. The townhomes are designed as zero lot line in groups of four to nine units. Each unit is on a separate lot, thus capable of sale and separate ownership. As amenities required as part of the PUD, plans call for construction of a clubhouse and trail system extending to Ammon Park and its surrounding neighborhoods. Staff is also recommending that the applicant work with the Parks and Rec Director to possibly add an amenity to Ammon Park, which may include pavement, even more pavement of that driveway to our parking area. As far as notification, per Idaho statute title 676509, all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing property boundaries have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that individuals may provide comment on the application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal on May 28, 2024. And two signs were posted on the subject property on May 28, 2024. All notices herein described have been provided at least 15 days' notice prior to the public hearing. At the time completion of this report, numerous written comments from the public have, have been received, mainly in opposition to the application, many of which have been forwarded to the commission prior to this evening's meeting. It should also be noted that as part of the application, the applicant and/or their representative must sign an affidavit of mailing list. Said list is based on most current equalized assessment rules acquired from the Vanet County Assessor's Office for property owners within a 300-foot radius of the subject property. And this is an outline as you go out from the properties within 300-foot radius. This is the area that falls within that area. Why, why planning and development? For greater detail, I would have the commission go to the staff report for pages three and four for details. Under 1702.140, again, the purpose of PUD is to facilitate a more flexible mixture of uses and, and development. They are intended to allow greater localized density to encourage cluster developments for preservation of open spaces, to arranging living patterns in accordance with good planning principles, and to provide adequate safeguards to protect the community. Staff finds that in this case, the strict terms of the minimum undisturbed requirement as the term by analysis to meet the strict terms of the slope standard is not in the community's best interest. Rather, is in the, is best planning practice to grant an exception to grading and allowing the road configuration to reduce the number of retaining walls associated with moving the road to meet the standard. And the engineer addressed that a little bit. But if you have questions on that, he can further explain that. Lot size averaging may include the common area of the project into lot size average calculation. Again, approximately four acres is being set aside for this purpose. This, this allows the lot size to be reduced in half from the minimum 3630 to 1816. The smallest slot based on averaging is 1,676 square feet. Staff concludes that the planning and development request is compliant with POCATE Minnesota Code Section 1702140. Should the commission recommend approval of the subject application? Staff recommends the 11 conditions that are outlined in the staff report. Also, like to mention that based on the comprehensive plan 2040, vision-oriented, outdoor-oriented, in 2040, and this is a vision statement, POCATE embraces its connection to nature through the preservation of outdoor spaces. Expanded recreational opportunities are connected and accessible. It was overwhelmingly clear during community engagement and meetings that parks and recreation were one of the highest priorities for the community. The city is currently undergoing a master parks plan. Feedback is currently being sought from citizens regarding the plan. And this is a QR code in case you're interested in participating with that. So if you have questions regarding the planning apartment and application before you, I'll, I'll answer those as best I can. Otherwise, I'll have Merrill come up and address the issues with Public Works, including the stormwater traffic and the water incident.
So where they are proposing what they call Park Circle, which will not be that, but for sake of what we have on our plans, that is not designated right away. It's the developer that is wanting to make that a road. So there's easy, so there's easier and safer access to and from this PUD, correct?
Yeah, the entire road system will, well, and Public Works just wants to have the one name, and it's going to be Public Road. It'll be built public standards, have curb-better sidewalk. You know, I think it's maybe a forty-one foot back-to-back, fifty-foot right-of-way. But again, if you have further questions, Merrill can answer.
Any questions for Matt?
No.
Matt, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have one. The applicant is asking for an exception, I believe, to open space standard, is that correct? Can you walk me?
Yeah, so, again, if you go to, I just would refer you to the staff report. So they did submit a slope analysis on this, and
He asked about if it was open space, which is
Oh, open space?
Yeah.
Okay, not the slope, I thought
Undisturbed.
I think he means the
Yeah, whichever one we're asking for the, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Yeah. So, so the, basically, the slope analysis, under their slope analysis, they believe that there's approximately two-point, I think, four-four acres that, that have been undisturbed. But when I went back and I looked at, at the aerial photography that goes back to nineteen-fifty-nine and so forth, and I would, I didn't, I don't have that up there, but you can see it in your packet where I have it kind of circled, where I think that it's actually less than that, I think that it's one-point-five-nine acres, plus or minus. And that's based on some, there's like three prominent noles right there, and then there's some vegetation that typically, you know, if it wasn't graded in the past, you're going to have junipers and, you know, that type of vegetation there, and there's not much there. So, under the slope analysis, it would say that you have to set aside ungraded to one-point-five-nine. What the applicant is asking for as an exception is to set aside the point-five-five acres, and basically because it better accommodates the road configuration and reduces the amount of retaining walls that would be required as part of putting in that road. And so, in this case, sometimes when you have a codes, you know, code requirements, and this, this is one of those, in, in, in my opinion, and is that it just doesn't really fit, it's better to keep the road configuration as it is, rather than to try to set aside one-point-five-nine acres. Yeah.
So we think it's less intrusive to make an exception in this way to the piece of property.
Yeah, and that's addressed as a, as a condition in the staff report. And it's explained kind of in there how I got to that.
So typically with slope analysis and undisturbed areas, it means you leave it undisturbed and you can't put houses on it. So if they're not putting houses on it, they don't need a road to go clear up to it, correct?
Well, you would, you would leave some, you know, open space somewhere, yeah, there would be one-point-five-nine acres that would not be disturbed.
So less houses?
Possibly.
Yeah, okay.
Possibly. But if you were to put in apartments under, under there, they could put in ninety-four, you'd put in ninety-four units.
Unless they're going into the undisturbed area.
Well, you'd, you'd still have the slope analysis, so.
Any other questions for Matt? No. Any questions for Merrill? Did he sneak out? Oh, he's up there. Any questions? Can you speak to the right-of-way, Merrill? And I guess I'll just start because typically when things are plotted out, even if there's not a road there, there's right-of-way already designated. And this is, typically, they're not designating right-of-way on what is already city property. It's private property, they do the right-of-way and give it to the city. So this is already city property.
This is already city property, yes. So if you want, I can try to, I'd like, we'll just follow what Matt had done, but Merrill Quell, Public Works Engineer for the City of Pocatello. We'll just talk first, let's talk about the stormwater, since that's the first one up there highlighted. So as you look at the staff report, as we've analyzed this and went through their calculations and so forth, and as the applicant has pointed out, there's three areas where water drains from I-15, and two of those go under I-15 and on the west side. So this has happened since I-15 was put in in the sixties. So if he moves that, then I'm not going to know what we're supposed to talk about next. So, moving through the stormwater, I think they've done a really good job trying to catch some of that flow and to be able to treat it in their common ponds in the middle of all of their development there. The city has asked, as it comes down, we have asked that the pond that they put on their south-westerly boundary, that that become a city pond. We're finding where a lot of the water from the roadways are coming here, this is coming into more of a central with I-15 water and so forth. This is a pond that should be taken over by the city and maintained. And then that overflow runs into the existing Ammon Park Pond that has been undersized for years. We have talked to one residence that has given us some history on that, and we are also asking for that pond to have an overflow to it, so that if it does start to, we do have some snow and rain events and frost and that, that we, throughout the whole town, that there are some issues at different times, so we want to make sure that we have the capabilities of, of being able to pump or release that water in a safe manner. And then also in our, some of our big storms, such as some of the areas of Sunday Storm, you know, seeing that if that does fill, that it will be able to be drained and also drain over a seventy-two-hour period exactly, too. One of the things that the applicant also pointed out, that this will be following the Portonah Valley Stormwater Design Manual, and that for these ponds that the city owns is a four-to-one slope. Now with that, he's made mention that the one side will be a ten-to-one slope, which is pretty flat, it's probably what's existing up there now for the most part. So, and then the road would be, be raised, so. To that point, do we have any questions on stormwater before we move to traffic? Okay.
Can I interrupt you with one question on stormwater?
Yes.
I think it was in our public comments, I've read a lot in the last week, so forgive me if I don't remember exactly where I read this, but I know that there were some citizen, citizen concerns about two things in regard to the stormwater. One, that it was going to be expanded and very large, which I think we've addressed already, kind of what that's going to look like. And the other was that this becomes a cesspool of stagnant water, bugs, a mess. Is expanding the pond area preventing that from happening? Like if we keep a smaller pond, are we more likely to see stagnant standing water? And if we expand it, it reduces that issue?
I would, looking at this, the, the size of the pond, more of the depths, but we don't allow anything to be over six foot. Now, when he talks about six foot, that's going to be the area right alongside of the road. This current pond area, dead can overflow, as I said, over and in, and down through the neighborhood currently. And to when we say expanding, it is possible that that water, depending on that much, could be already over into some of that expanded area before it goes over. I know that the city, a few years back, you know, had to go up there and kind of put a ditch out there so that it part could drain versus one of them snow and rain events. So the area is not necessarily the area, but the way the soil is underneath, and if we can keep that aerated and kind of cleaned out, so that the water will percolate and go into the ground naturally, is one of the things we prefer for treatment and so forth. The, and then, and then again, the slope, so you've got the surface area at the bottom. So to expand the pond is just going to increase that surface area that it has there. Of course, we're going to be taking more water, but also the surface area that it has to drain.
Okay, thank you. And is that a benefit to the city owning what looks like it would be two ponds now if that one section's donated to the city, that the city could then take care and make sure that the, the ground is treated appropriately, aerated appropriately?
That's what we're, we're hoping in the area that the city is moving towards, is some of these big regional ponds and more that takes that, where the city is equipped better than a homeowners association and so forth. We have the, the equipment to get in, to grub it out when necessary, to clean them and to, to do what we need to do, where in a property owner, owner's association, we see that the funding, the equipment, trying to get a contractor in, and that sometimes is burdensome. However, with that said, there's still going to be an association or the property is this under one, one ownership in the middle there, at their central ponds, they're calling them, I believe, that will remain under private ownership. That's where we have to deal the next to houses and everything else, and we're not equipped, nor do we want the liability, bringing the big equipment in and trying to deal with that.
Thank you for speaking to that.
Yes. Traffic? I've been here a while at the city, and it seems like every time a subdivision comes up, traffic is always one of those, those impacts that we get to talk about. Let's start first with the chair's question about the property. The bottom, this was more of a city requirement when they started bringing this in, that the road would need to extend across there for emergency services, for access, for continuity with the traveling area and so forth, that this was, this would be one of the requirements, that that road would have to go across there to tie in. We wouldn't have these long dead ends, again, for mostly emergency services, to be able to, to, to access and the public to have secondary access when, when needed to get out. So with that said, in the report, for those that have read that, our MPO, or Metropolitan Planning Organization, in there, we have the guidelines for traffic, and when a traffic study's going to be needed or an evaluation and so forth. In that, they have twelve cars per day, twelve trips, which comes out to a hundred-and-thirty-two cars a day, which actually calculates to a hundred-and-twenty-nine an hour or two cars a minute. That, when you put it into that aspect, you know, one car an hour in some developments, people, that's just too many, but this is based on a national standard, and if you take in the traffic manuals, too, because we want to be more conservative, if you actually take in that for the AM peak and the PM peak hours, using the calculations, like you said, on the national standard, you're looking at about sixty-five or seventy cars per hour or one car a minute during the peak hours. That's morning, and in the afternoon, when people are coming and going to work versus coming or exiting the, or coming back home. On a Saturday, roughly, you'd look at the manual there, they, with this being townhomes broke down to townhomes that are rented or condominiums, you're looking at about seven-hundred-and-fifty cars a day for the whole day, and then you break that in for that formula, you're looking at about one and a half cars per minute. So however you look at it, you're doing to one to two cars a minute on these roadways. The roadways is to be the same as Lakeview, we're asking that to be a forty-one, forty to forty-one foot back-to-back of curb. That means they can have access for parking on, on the sides of the roads, and then also the minimum of a two-ten-foot travel lanes for the twenty-foot max, or the minimum for emergency services to travel that roadway. This will have planter strips along the side, or park strips, however you want to call them, and also five-foot sidewalks in the development itself and, and along the road that comes out to Ammon Park. All right, there, Lakeview, basically, you have to wind around, it does come out on Pine, which was talked about, or Poplar, where it come out earlier. If you come out, one of the main routes is you can come out of Ammon, you turn, you'll go down Pine, and that is one reason why, a few years back, why that signal was placed at Pine, is because of the, the travelway to Yellowstone up through there that could be used as that corridor and from Ammon Park and Hyde and Franklin and so forth. So, any questions on traffic?
Will you remind us what the city code states for when a traffic impact study is required?
Traffic impact study is required when there's a hundred-peak hour travel units there per hour. Then, right now, like I said, doing the evaluation, you do everything there. For the peak hour, with the national standard manual that I have, is roughly sixty-five to seventy, so we fall short for an actual traffic impact study.
Yep, they have eighty-six in their analysis, so.
Yeah, and that's with more conservative using the, the, or MPO's requirements of the twelve per day.
Okay. Do you remember what the third topic was?
The third topic is probably water and sewer utilities or something, I don't know, I have a very short memory when it comes to sunlight and stuff, so.
I do have a question about water. Do you think that it's reasonably possible for them to do this construction and keep these water lines flowing to all these houses? Looks a little tough.
So you've read my report, haven't you? So one of the things for this
I do my homework, you guys.
One of the, one of the conditions is, is that we have to make sure that we're minimizing the outages to reroute this water line. So the water line will be what we're going to call Lakeview, and the new water line will need to be put in place, the new PRV put in place, everything there, that will have to be tested and chlorinated and ready to go into use. At that time, at the contractor-developer's expense, the city will come in, because it's a city line at that time, and our guys are certified to do this type of work under the AWWA rules, then we'll come in and cut the existing line, just where we've done the taps that's coming in, and cap those, block them off, and then turn the system on. I'm guessing our guys are pretty good at water when they do that, you're looking at probably a two-hour on each tap if, with the crews that's there, so we're going to have, I would anticipate about a four-hour outage one day that would have to be communicated, and we'll try to minimize that by maybe placing some extra valves in the lines at this time as we look forward. We do require that the contractor supply us a chlorination and an outage plan, so that we can also review that and what they think they're going to be doing, because again, as Public Works and that, we cannot tell a contractor means and methods of how to do their job. So that's one of the, the things that we have to be very conscious about. So that's there, I believe it can happen. We are going to have a, an outage, though I don't see any way around having a short outage, but we will try to minimize that as we do in all developments.
I want to go back to traffic if there's no water
You don't want sewers? We need to take care of sewer, sewer's always important, isn't it?
Yeah. Go ahead, sewer first.
That's not that important.
It goes downhill, right?
Yeah. The sewage for this is, was pointed out, the line that is actually feeding this right now is fairly minimum. We do have about a hundred-and-forty feet of six-inch line, current standards, any line that goes in now, that's going to be a public line, is to be eight inches. So doing some quick analysis, too, on this, and I've asked for the, in the report, to, to give me some analysis, so I can check that against what we have and what we know with our system. But right now, that six-inch line has the capability with the grade that it's on, it roughly about roughly about 180 gallons a minute. And right now, like I said, there's, and was pointed out, there's just the three, three buildings, three structures that's there right now, so we don't have a whole lot of flow on that. Adding the 86 units and using 100 gallons per capita, per person, per day, say we got four unit, four, 400 gallons per unit there, we would add about 25 gallons a minute to this line, roughly is what the estimate is. And I still want to have that line checked, though, and we'll verify the use of that so that we need to see if that needs to be upsized, look at the friction losses in that pipe, see if it needs to be lined or so forth, just to make sure, because it does go behind some of those houses, we want to make sure that it's in proper use. It, some of our, some of our areas seems to be not looked at on a year-to-year basis. We try to get around, but some of them, you know, it's every three or four years we get to some of these areas, so they're hard to access. So we are going to be looking at that and before the final application comes in too. We can go back to traffic now if you wish.
They were asking for an exemption to put some parking spots right off the street by the clubhouse and one other location, I believe.
Yes.
With the amount of traffic they're going to be seeing, how do you feel about cars pulling in and out of those parking spaces?
If this was more on a, more of an arterial street and that, I would be very concerned about that. But where the parking is on, for lack of better words, that's more of a dead end, even though it's a loop, we're asking for the loop. The people that's going there are going to be going there. It's not like they're going to be traveling through there to get to the other side of I-15 and that. So in our code, that does require an exception by city council. So that would be one of the areas that need to be addressed during the final application of city council so that we make sure that, that that has been granted an exception. And at this time, in my evaluations, I do not see that as an issue.
I have a traffic question for you.
Sure.
We had two public comments, one from Ms. Rich that lives on Hyde, just below where the intersection of Hyde and Ammon Street connect. It was mentioned multiple collisions from cars going too fast down Ammon Street and subsequently landing in a car. So is that something we're looking at? We have a hill, it's an issue that we're just going to have to handle? Is there some sort of mitigation that the city needs to look at with the addition of more traffic? I mean, is it a concern? It's obviously a concern for Ms. Rich, whose car was totaled. But is it something the city can do something about? And is that going to be a greater risk now that we see more traffic coming from Ammon down to Hyde?
Okay, that's a, that's a good question, and I think the answer is in her, in her comment, is that it's on a hill and the traffic was going too fast.
Yeah.
If everybody's following the speed limit at 25 miles an hour with them, those residential streets are there, it's more of a policing issue.
Yeah.
At that point, a design issue, it is not. We have a lot of areas in Pocatello that come in at a lot steeper grade. This one, Ammon does come in, but it's a lot, lot less than 10% where it's coming into Hyde. So it's more of a policing and a driving, unattentive driving and so forth, the issues that's going on. Of course, when you have more traffic, you have more potential of people not paying attention and doing that, so. But it, it's not a design issue, it's a, it's a driving issue.
Thank you. Would speed bumps be feasible, especially where it's near a park?
Speed bumps in the public right of way, that is not acceptable and against the Idaho codes, you cannot put obstructions in the roadway. We do try to camouflage our potholes, though, to be look like spat bumps to, to slow traffic down, but-
Perfect.
But no, speed bumps would not be allowed by, by code and by law. They can be on private roads and so forth, but they cannot be on a public road.
Okay. Any other questions for Merrill?
I, I could bring up one other thing, I know amenities. We have talked to our parks director, there are some suggestions, and these are only suggestions as we move forward there. These have not been talked about with the developer, nor their applicant representative. So one of those is we've talked about the pickleball courts, because of the terrain and because of the noise and that, our parks director and where we're trying to put those amenities and a few other areas of town, did not want them here. However, the roadway that comes in, and I don't know, we can look at that, the roadway that would come in that's being improved, we would like to see possibly a, a, that paved in and maybe some of the parking stalls closer to here, where currently you have to come clear to the end there, but maybe paved up to some of them parking amenities there of, I don't know, I know there's quite a few people at times. I've used this park myself, even though I live, clearing a different part of the community. But maybe we're looking at, you know, five, six spaces and then, and pave to that. Another amenity might be that we ask that a sewer, four-inch sewer line be drug up somewhere along here and a water line that could be stubbed out for a future restroom that could be there. We could get rid of the porta potty in the parks and as much as we can. So there's another one, not building the restrooms because we try to look for grants and that, but at least get the utilities there before they pave or doing something like that. And another possibility that we did not talk to the Parks and Rec Department, but as we look at the trails and pathways, maybe, maybe, maybe it's not fully paved at this time, but maybe it could be paved, but maybe a pathway that ends, they showed a pathway coming up, and maybe there's a pathway down through the park that circles the park or something. Again, that has not been talked with the Parks Department. The others have been, this was not, but another possibility for amenities. If you want some thoughts and suggestions also, that would have to also be clear to make sure that with the finances, everything else, and the budget with the developer too, some of these things could, not all of them, but maybe it's one of them or maybe the other or something.
I, I think you, I did want to point out not that number six in the conditions is that the applicant worked with Parks and Rec to add an amenity to the park, so it is a condition.
Yes, yes, and possibly there. You asked earlier about maybe pinpointing some and maybe some other suggestions, but that would be, that would be my suggestions.
Okay.
As we've talked with them, and I know our planning director has also talked with the parks director also.
Okay.
Brett McLean, planning director. To that point, I do want to be clear that it is a condition in there, but an improvement to the park is not a requirement of the PUD.
Right.
It, it's not something that has to be done with the PUD. They have already provided amenities associated with the PUD with their clubhouse and their trail systems and the open space. Anything outside of their property onto the park is not a requirement for them to have that PUD approved. I just wanted to make sure that was clear too.
Thank you. Everybody good?
Good.
It's eight. Do we want to take a quick break?
Yeah.
I say we do because we're going to be here a while.
I think we're going to be here a minute.
Yeah. We are going to take 10 minutes if we need to, might be less, and then we will start back up. We'll leave the public hearing open, so please don't talk to any of us. We want to be able to vote tonight.
I just want to let everybody know that this is recorded, so as you're talking and stuff, it kind of picks up and makes it hard to hear.
It's also live streamed.
And it's live streamed, so you can go and watch it later. All right, I'm going to repeat this again. When you come to the podium, make sure you state your name. That will be after you've already signed in. Please do not pass the sign-in sheet around. Make sure your comments are addressed only to the commission, not to the audience or the applicant. You will only have three minutes, and will it be asked to stop when time runs out? Make sure you're keeping questions and comments pertinent to the application. If you're going to read anything, you need to get permission to do that. I've asked several times for cell phones to be turned off. And then, I guarantee you, we have read all the comments that have come in, even the ones that came in later today were printed for us, and we read those beforehand. So if we can't duplicate, we know a lot of you have the same questions and concerns. It saves us time, and we are listening, I promise. So at this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony in support of the application to come forward. Not all at once, guys.
They're scared, dude.
Anybody providing testimony uncommitted?
Do I have permission to read my handwritten notes?
Sure. Thank you for asking.
Oh, I didn't write a dictionary. Okay, my name is Jonathan Jensen. I had a lot of questions as they presented here. One is, how likely is this pond in Ammon Park going to be filling? And it'll obviously present more of a drowning hazard for children. Is there an opportunity for the developer to make sure that Ammon Pond is the very last to fill? So all their previous drainage ponds or catch basins upstream, can they fill first and make sure Ammon Pond fills last? The clubhouse, in my opinion, is, the parking is severely undersized. The distance from most of those units, the residents are going to drive to that clubhouse and park. If there's a family reunion or other large gathering, it's just going to be parking on the street. Also, if there are reunions or gatherings at people's individual townhomes, that's also going to clog up the streets with off-street, or parking on the streets. I heard rental office in the clubhouse, so I presume these are going to be rentals and not owned? I did not get clarification on that. This four acres set aside for open space. Is that one contiguous area, or is that just little teeny tiny chunks of parking strips and other things scattered around? Could you even get a full-size basketball court to fit in an area on that four acres? Or is it just scattered hither and yon and fragmented? And then visitor parking, too. Again, that goes with gatherings in people's homes, or rental units, or whatever. Is there real visitor parking that's off-street? So it seems really high-density to me. I kept hearing presentations of, you know, well, we can put more apartments in there in townhomes, almost as if it's like we're doing the city a favor by putting in townhomes, and if we don't get townhomes, they're going to put high-density apartments in there. So I was kind of not thrilled to hear that, but those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vidia Noble, Pocatello resident. I am speaking neutral on this issue only because I don't live up there. Otherwise, I would be totally against it. But here are some concerns as a tax-paying resident that I have that I just want to voice my concerns. Is this common practice to allow a developer and a landowner to have use of public land in a park so that they can make their subdivision or development successful? Because it sure seems to me, as a layperson, that part of the success of this development depends on the use of that road access that is part of Ammon Park and the enlargement of a retention pond. The drainage of that area with so much building going on is definitely going to be affected. It can't not be affected. And I'm concerned, is this standard practice in Pocatello? Because I think we may be setting a precedent we don't want to send. Because other subdivisions that want to go in next to parks are just going to potentially assume, oh, we'll just use parkland for our road and for another bigger retention pond. I'm very concerned about that. The other thing is, I know we have the engineering expertise to do anything, build anything, connect to anything, but all of this is going to be at an added cost to the city. And what I would propose is that when subdivisions like this are being put in, I think more needs to be done for the benefits potentially given to the subdivision developer to offset the costs of a park. I don't think adding amenities to the park is a great idea. That's nice, but I'd like to see something done of the, an HOA fee assigned to those apartments, or those condos, or townhomes, that offsets the city's cost that is going to exist for enlarging and maintaining retention ponds that are kind of impacted by all of this development. So potentially, developers need to consider that as a part of their responsibility for being allowed to access public land. I heard them say, city staff say, there's no donation, but there's a use of public land that totally benefits this subdivision being successful. Let's look towards some monies that could be obtained to offset the additional city costs that are going to be incurred in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No applause from the audience. We'll close the public hearing if you guys are going to applaud.
Terry Meisner, I'm just a concerned citizen. I've got three things to bring up. One is, of course, that retention pond. All things run downhill. The retention ponds that are going to be within the, in the area there, seem like all they're going to do is catch the water coming from across the interstate and that kind of stuff. Everything that's shoveled into the street, pushed into the street, snow removal, rain off the driveways and everything, going to run downhill. There's nothing that they said about catch, where it's going to go to. Is it going to go down into a gutter system and end up in that retention pond? Nobody covered that. Kids playing in that, that's a great kids' place. I've got great-grandkids that'll be playing in the area. That covers up with snow and ice. They fall through. Is it going to be fenced off? If it's fenced off, then there goes part of our parks. The blue lines that I see in there, because it starts upon the hill system of Pocatello, those are all transmission water lines. I hope that as they're building the subdivision, if it goes through, I hope not, if it goes through, that they respect those water lines, that they give those people that work for the water department room to work on those if they do break, which they all do, because they just get old. Some of them are very old as of now. I hope they look into replacing those before they build over them. Give them room to work on those. Don't build up next to, we've got places within the city that are within feet of water lines, of homes, that we have to hand-dig and fix those water lines. I think that's all I've got to cover. I just hope they start respecting the people who have bought in that area, that do not want development to come in there and crowd them out, to take up some of their, why they bought in that area. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uncommitted? Anyone else uncommitted? All right, so then we will move on to those opposing the application. Just a reminder, sign your name. If you're standing in line, sign your name. You have to be able to vote to speak. Sorry, honey. We read your signs, though.
This agenda, I'm five.
Yes.
Can I just put a agenda on the back of that in case people have questions?
Okay, sorry.
And just, the next person in line, don't be afraid to come up and sign in while he's talking, so we can keep it moving.
So I'm James Finley, a resident around the Ammon Park. My main concern is overpopulation and the effect that it's going to have on the local elementary schools to accommodate classroom size. My, I have two children, and I'm planning on having them go to elementary schools near Ammon Park, and I'm concerned that my children won't get the attention they deserve from the teacher due to too many children being, having to be into one classroom, because we won't have the time to build upon the schools to accommodate that, increased population. And then my other concern is the effect it's going to have on public safety in the neighborhood. I know this is a common concern in lots of these situations, and it's often discounted, but I did bring an academic article, or if I have permission to kind of read something from that.
Yeah, if you have time.
Okay. It is, the name of it is "The Effects of Multi-Family Housing on Property Values: Crime and Code Violations in Little Rock." It was a study done from 2000 to 2016. And I would love to read lots, but I'm just going to read the ultimate findings, not because I'm trying to hide or sugarcoat how they got these. I would love to go into how they got these results, but I will just read the results. It says that "These changes can be taken as a measure of the effect of multifamily housing development on violent crime risk. Based on this measure, we can conclude that, on average, violent crime risk is significantly higher upon completion of a condominium project, or a large or more than five buildings market-rate apartment project. Crime risk increased by an average of 0.28% points within 1,000 feet of any new condominium development, and by 0.74% points within 1,000 feet of a large-market apartment complex. These results are statistically significant, meaning that probability of obtaining these results because of random sampling error is less than 5%. So we cannot discount that there isn't going to be a risk to crime rates in this neighborhood due to overpopulation and to these new apartment complexes." And I just want to say that I moved, I bought my home here because I was starting a family. I have two kids, both are under the age of three. And I bought my home here because I felt like it was a nice, quiet neighborhood where they could grow up safe and go to a school that wasn't overpopulated, and in a safe, nice neighborhood next to a park. And I thought that was a miracle, and now I am very distressed that that's going to be taken away.
Hey, James, is there any way the pages that you read that you could give to...
I could just give this to you guys.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Great.
My name is David Worley. I'm a citizen of Pocatello. My children play in this park. I have lots of friends and family who live in the area. A lot of the families, you know, in this room are here, are children who my children play with. And I think that when you go to look at what was presented earlier, the pub review criteria, and they said the only thing they had was number three, the project conserves natural topographic features as the only issue. I think it's pretty obvious from the look at this room that actually number four is the biggest issue, even though they put it in green. "The project promotes compatibility with adjacent land uses, established neighborhoods, and available public facilities." Specifically, that central part, established neighborhoods. I think that one thing that we're going to hear from a lot of people here, it's very obvious that the oppose versus support. No one has supported this project. No one came here to do it, except for the developer. That the general consensus is that this is not going to be work with the established neighborhood. A lot of people buy these types of houses in these neighborhoods, or where I bought, and where lots of people buy, is they're looking actually for lower-density, places where people have yards, places where there's space, low traffic. And I know that you can do traffic studies, throw all these numbers and all these things about what the average is and this, but everybody knows that if you go to an area that has this level of density, you're just going to have more vehicles. And, you know, whether or not you run all the numbers, every car that's going down your street, you got one a minute, that just makes it more and more difficult to let your kids out in the neighborhood, let them play, go from place to place. And this is purposely why people buy homes in these types of communities. So when you have a developer come in and then radically alter the nature of a neighborhood, it's going to have an impact, no matter how you throw out the numbers or look at some of these things. We all just know that's the case. And then last thing I'd like to say is that, just on the nature of government in general, so we live in a community, we live in a city, and what the people who live around there, what the community thinks, and how many people are opposed versus support, is a critical aspect that goes beyond the technical details. We don't live in some sort of radical absolutist property right position in a community where you can just do whatever you want on your property. That's not really how these things work in real life. And part of your role as a commission, I hope you take into account the views of the people, and not just looking at the technical details. And I hope, all as I understand, you're making a recommendation, you're not the final decision-makers, that the elected officials who will ultimately make this decision will take that into account. That this is a community where you make decisions as a group, because these decisions impact groups of people. We're not just looking at one property owner and what they want to do that will maximize profits for a developer. Thank you.
My name is Stanley Zoner. Do I need permission to read my comments?
Yeah, if I get a copy of it when you're done.
Okay. I'm hoping that you'll deny the request for the Park Place Townhouse subdivision. Proposed roads will not accommodate the increased traffic safely. For example, the corner of Lakeview and Poplar is already a dangerous corner, as people make that corner by going in the center of the road instead of staying in the proper lane. That corner has had multiple slide-offs into the yard at 539 Hyde Avenue during the winter months. If the traffic turns onto Placid and then Poplar, instead of using Lakeview, that portion of Poplar is congested with cars on both sides of the road, making it hard for two cars to pass at the same time, depending on the size of the vehicle. Adding more traffic down this road will just increase chances of accidents on an already bad road. The intersection of Hyde and Poplar, as you are coming off the 500 block of Hyde and turning left towards Jefferson, is also bad, as it is hard to see past the cars that are parked on the south side of the road. The intersection of Jefferson and Poplar will also become more congested as people are heading south on Poplar to Jefferson, especially if people are going straight off Poplar, or if they turn left. If this does pass, you need to make the east side of Jefferson-Poplar a right turn only. It will also cause problems at the intersection of Ammon and Hyde, which you discussed earlier. They said that was due to traffic, speed of traffic, but it's usually more during the wintertime with the ice. No matter how slow you go, they've been multiple times, they've gone across into the house across the street and hit the cars that are landed in the yard. As you consider this proposal, think about it as if you were the ones living in the area, not as someone living somewhere else. It's easy when you live somewhere else to say, let them do it, because it does not affect me or my family. Also, in the testimonies earlier about the exceptions, I'd hope you don't give the exceptions. Those codes are there for a reason. If you do give the exceptions, you need to change the law, give everybody the same exceptions. Don't just make exceptions for one subdivision. Thank you.
Can I get that, a copy of that? And will you state your last name for me again, please? Zoner? Zoner. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Louis Clark, and I live within walking distance of Ammon Park. And not only do my kids and family walk there, but a lot of kids walk from all the way down from the Green Acres area by Oak Street, and all the way up by Montevista and Alameda. Lots of kids love to walk to Ammon Park, specifically because it doesn't have a road going through there. It's a very safe park right now. And when they're talking about the traffic being one or two cars per minute, that's going from no cars, that's going from no road, to one or two cars per minute. And they're not going to be accounting for the additional traffic of the loop being used by other people. You know, their calculations are for the people living in the 86 rental units, but there's going to be additional traffic, too. And I think it affects the neighborhoods of that whole area. I mean, just like the previously talked about agendas of, you know, when it was mentioned, the traffic by Jefferson and Poplar, that's 1,000 cars a day in that area. And every winter, it is not plowed up the grid enough. Cars are sliding all over the place. That whole area is not getting plowed enough. And that's 1,000 extra cars sliding around up there, and now going through the park where they previously were not. And every winter, when it snows, tons of kids go up there to sled at Ammon Park because there's no traffic. It's got great hills, no traffic. As long as they stay off the street behind them, it's totally safe to just go down on your sled. All of this is to make profit off of rental properties, but when they're talking about amenities and stuff, it is lowering the quality of the park and raising the danger to the children, and they're calling it an upgrade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Patrick Young. I brought a copy of the statement I'm going to read tonight. That's okay?
Perfect.
So, as I just mentioned, my name's Patrick. I live on Ammon Street, across the street, directly from the entrance of Ammon Park, with my fiancee Jenna Kramer. I come from a family of construction workers, and I worked with my father for many years as a grader and as an underground sewer and water utility company. After going to college a long time, I moved here from Georgia to take a job at Idaho State University as a professor. And I just know how bad affordable housing is here for a young couple. I rented a small home in the Highland area for a year, and we just lucked out on a place on Ammon Street the following year. Housing crisis is crazy right now. Given my upbringing, I understand relationships between cities and developers, contractors, and more importantly, the property owners. Owners deserve the right to build what they want to on their land, and my issues today primarily come from a place of concern for the project. I dislisted in the current plans that I was able to find. I'm in no way telling someone what they can and cannot do with their property. So I only have five things to talk about. My biggest concern is about why there's an easement going to a private property using a public property, the park entrance. Some questions that I initially come from, just been living across the street, is will that entrance become a double-lane entrance? Because right now, it's just the one car. Everyone drives right down the middle. There's going to be a lot of collisions there. Will there be a new sign advertising the townhomes entrance at the main entrance where you turn in? Or will there be a new clear renovated park sign where that initial turn is? In other words, will it still be a park? In other words, will it still be a park from a person that just randomly drives by? I agree that the current entrance to the park is kind of an eyesore, and I did notice a little bit of paving on the plans right before the turn, right past the porta potty, but the paving doesn't cover the full entrance, and I recommend that the developer go all the way to the backside of the lot, include the parking with the paving. And I know that is expensive. So tagging on to the easement issue that I had from number one, looking at the plans, I don't see a reason to have two separate entrances into the private property unless it's mandated by the city. Keep all new traffic regulated to the existing private property around about, could very easily be added into the, into the list of drawings that are on the site, essentially just making it one big circle. They may have to remove the four townhomes that are on the southwest side of the property and turn that into a call sack for emergency vehicles to be able to turn around. I know the owner and developer will advertise this park when selling these townhomes, aware to the owner, maybe make the townhome property exclusive and market it as an upsell option to the existing apartments. Keep it gated, keep it safe with easy park access all the way around. People will pay $100 or $200 more a month to have a special community of their own, and that doesn't affect the Ammon side of that, of that property at all. Regarding the Ammon Street speed issue, yes, there is a speed issue there. There is, there is a speed limit sign, I did find it, it's located behind a tree about 50 feet in front of my house, you cannot see that whatsoever, you have to drive halfway up the road just to be able to find it. Okay. There's more here.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Adam Foster. I live at 147 Spence Place. I guess you didn't need that specificity whatsoever, but it's just a little bit above the park. So I've lived there, our families lived there for, I guess it's almost 34 years now, and I don't even think I can count on my hands the number of times that I've seen that thing, you know, full, the reservoir even close to full. But my main point is, you put in that road, you allow them to expand that pond, Ammon Park as it is today is mutilated. What we know now is gone, it will never come back. Don't put in the road. You know, don't put it, especially don't let it connect, because then it's really going to get fun driving because on the other side of Ammon, that isn't part of tonight, you know, they're putting in the housing development there, so eventually I'll be connected. No, please don't. The traffic right now is, call it negligible would be generous. You know, you see, you know, whatever, a couple people going up, a couple people going down, but the real danger is that, not so much, I mean, I've slid a little bit on Ammon, but not that much, it's that turn, you go right out to Hyde to Pine. That thing can get ugly if one person on the other, on either side is not being responsible and being slow. You know, I kind of drive, you know, like really, really slow anyway, so it's never been a problem for me, but you get a lot of aggressive people going in there really fast, you know, there will be wrecks. You know, I just, leave it alone. You know, I've, I've listened to the various different testimonies, you know, tonight, and in one case, one of the gentlemen said that there's only one way out? No, there's two. You can go on Jane. In an emergency, half, you know, some people could go on Ammon and then write about, here's the park a little bit down and turns into Jane, that's another way out. It's just, and we don't want, I'm speaking for myself, I don't want an additional development there, whether it's pickleball or whether it's anything. You want to put in a permanent bathroom, you know, I wouldn't say no, but I wouldn't also, you know, sacrifice the integrity of the park to get it. You know, I know you have a hard job, you know, and with, you know, and I know you have to listen to a lot of stuff, but please, don't approve this. Just say no, you know, don't, don't allow the exception, especially don't allow that connecting road, because the quality of life, the people that live here now, not the ones who could live there in the future of the bill, that will be affected. Now, I can't, I can't see the future, so I can't tell you, oh, it's going to be affected this much, it's going to be affected that much, but it will be affected and it will be affected negatively. Thank you.
Dr. Rick Williams, first I would like to thank the chairperson for her attention and sharp questions that she asked, like all of you asked. I'm impressed that you were paying so much attention to this issue. Okay, two points. One is the clear contradiction in what's been talked about as a desire for the citizenry to have more open space, more hiking and just ability to get out of town. And the contradiction between that and then stuffing, kind of shoehorning this many places in one of the areas that I see people walking in, I live right up there, I see people walking in the area where they're putting this in, see them walking there all the time. It is a place that gets substantial use. If you were putting in fewer houses, townhouses, if you were putting in fewer, I would feel easier about the situation than the number that are being put in. I'm surprised nobody suggested that. May have been talked about, I just am not aware of it. Anyway, the last point has to do with the traffic. Now, traffic is a very big issue in that area, especially during the wintertime. People that can't get parked in their, their own houses or in their driveways that park, in particular on Ammon Street, halfway out into the street, somebody lived up there, they know all about that, okay? I had the valance on my car torn off this last winter when the people that cleared the roads didn't bother to clear Charles Place over a weekend, and I needed to get out and get food, but they didn't clean the road, and in order to get out, I had to drive my low sedan out, and it literally tore the valance off the car. That's the front low part that doesn't lift your car up in the snow, but it does plow a little bit and then breaks off. Not a fun thing. The biggest problem though is involving the traffic has to do with the difficulty turning left. So everyone knows what I'm talking about, moving from, say, Hyde Street toward the greenhouse. Then if you're trying to go to Yellowstone, you're easy, but moving in that direction, if you try to go further to Jefferson, it's very, very difficult in the busy times. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Don't even get 10 seconds left. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Danielle Reese. So I actually bought my house on Friday on Ammon Street, and I did not know about any of this. This really would have played into my decision to purchase a house. I probably would have purchased another house that I was looking at. Previous to Friday, though, I lived further down Pine, closer to the other park, and my children's bus stop is on Pine and Jefferson. The bus stops on Jefferson, no car ever sees it coming, it's a giant yellow bus, but every car follows it through the light, they stop in the middle of the light. My son was actually run over on November 3rd, 2023. He is okay, but somebody, it was his right of way to walk across the street. He's almost as tall as me, but he is 11 years old, and so if somebody that tall and that big can not be seen by a car, I don't know what's going to happen when another one to two cars a minute to two minutes come, whatever they said. So they have had that bus stop all school year, and as of now, it's still going to be the next bus stop for next year, so I just know that that hasn't been commented or told. And so I do worry about my son every day walking across, and actually, he was scared to ride the bus, but we're, I can't, I can't pick him up because I have to work. So that is just my comments, that it does, it seems like there's going to be too much traffic for all of the kids that have to do their buses. So there are more buses over at the other park, but his school, their bus is on Jefferson, and it stops before and after the Pine light, going either way to and from school, so.
Thank you.
My name is Ms. [inaudible].
Please pause it for a second. Are you reading this young lady's notes?
I was, I have other things to say, and then I was going to ask permission as stated earlier.
Yes, I would love that, but I would like her to stand by you while you do that, if she will.
Okay.
What's your name, honey?
Michelle.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, start with your name and then we'll restart your time.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Holyoke, and I am Paige Holyoke's mom, and just like many other people in this room, I am here for my children. So Paige says, hello, my name is Paige Holyoke. When me and my sister walk to Ammon Park, we go to it on an old trail to a dirt road, but if there is a road, it won't be as safe, and if buildings are built, any roads are expanded, then it will become, I worry, dangerous. In the winter, Ammon Park provides one of the best sledding hills in Pocatello, but if we lose part, depending on how the drainage pond is put, the hill might be inaccessible. That would make me super sad, for then I would have to find another sledding hill, but I think none would come close to topping Ammon Park. Please, I beg you, leave my neighborhood and park alone.
Thank you, Paige.
My, you know, like I said, concern is as a mother, but also, my question to you is kind of an education question for us, and that is, for those of us who've never been involved in anything like this before, if, you know, you approve this or don't approve this, what is the next step as far as if you, I know in the past that you have denied things that then the city council approved, and then it was kind of like, well then what was the purpose of all of this, right? So I know that there's been cases out in South Fifth, things like that, where you, you denied it, and then the city council approved it. So if that's the case, I don't want this momentum to die, right, on the next step. So I would like some education on how that goes forward, and I would like to understand kind of what the point of all of this is if the city can just override you. Does that make sense?
It does, and I'm going to let staff or legal answer that when we're done, because they'll do a way better job.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Paige.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Stringham. I have lived in the Ammon Park area for over 10 years. The couple things that I want to address, that several people have kind of addressed a little bit, is the increased traffic with the lack of city sidewalks to ensure the safety of young children and families going to and from the park. There is currently no sidewalks on Ammon Street and with increased traffic. I can see that presenting a major problem for our kids that are walking to and from the park. The speed, which many already travel with increased, people traveling to and from, that number of speeding vehicles increases, which creates a safety issue to said children and families. And, and we can say all day long that that's a police issue, but it is also a development issue because it is a concern to the citizens. Somebody else already addressed the speed limit signs. The pond, as it is being called on the maps from the developer for the water runoff. We've already discussed the fact that in their 290-page document called Final Drainage Report, that they are going to, that they want to increase it from 8,000 cubic feet to 40,000 cubic feet. That is a substantial increase in size that would affect the current layout of Ammon Park. So we can say all day long that we're not giving them Ammon Park, or we're not giving away part of Ammon Park, but that is part of Ammon Park. And I can say that in the 13 years that I have lived there, I have never seen that ever fill up, and so it was never a pond. And yet, they're saying, the developer said in his statement in the Idaho State Journal yesterday, that it could take up to 48 hours for that pond to drain. And I can honestly tell you, I've never seen water in that pond for even a day, let alone 48 hours. So that is a huge concern for me, especially with small children, because even in three inches of water, a child can drown. And he mentioned potentially up to three feet of water, that's a lot of water. I share similar concerns of some neighbors regarding the entrance to the park. It is only entrance to the park, and it is now, it is not wide enough for a car, for two cars to enter and one to exit, or one car to enter and one car to exit at the same time. My concern with this is that there are times where it is already, where it already creates backup on Ammon Street. I live right down from the park, I can tell you that I've seen cars sitting out there trying to turn into Ammon Park, and traffic is coming down the street and they can't turn, which then backs up traffic, causing me not to be able to back out of my driveway, causing other people not to be able to come up Ammon Street. So that is a concern, and that's pretty much all I have to say on that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Lazarus Clark. Herc, I want you to take a look at these people, all these people and all these testimonies, they have all come here because they all, they all deeply care about this, they have an investment, and there's, there's, you know, a sort of community surrounding this one park, Herc, and I, and I'm worried that if you choose to approve this proposal, you will be alienating all these people, in these times of government distrust in favor of a, a rental company that is profiting off all these, off the impacts that these people have brought to your guys' attention. That's something I would like you guys to consider. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few notes, I'll give them to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jenna Kramer. My fiancee and I recently bought a house directly across the street from Ammon Park, and regarding the speed on Ammon Street, yes, it is a huge issue. People are regularly flying down that street and almost hitting me walking my dog on a daily basis. The increased traffic obviously will only add to that problem, and obviously, yes, it's a policing issue, and not the developer or whatever, but because it's below 35 miles an hour, apparently according to some law, we can put in speed humps, not speed bumps on that road. So I would like to ask about that, if that's a possibility. Now regarding the signage that was posted, warning the residents of the area of this project, it was very small, very hard to notice, we didn't notice it for a long time, and the notice we got at our houses within the 300-mile radius, that was a very small area, it's going to affect many, many more people in the area than just 300 feet of radius. So I would just like to say, my partner and I have lived in Pocatello now for about two years, and we love it here, and we want to be able to live here without having these developments encroach on our views and our beautiful areas that we live in. I think we have the right to be able to buy a property and not have these big developers come in and ruin everything. And I strongly agree with the person before me who said that it's kind of alienating all the people here, we're a community, and even though my partner and I are new to this community, we feel very strongly about this issue, and we strongly encourage you to recommend not moving forward to the city council with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. No, you're just fine.
My name is Karen Betts. My husband and I live on the corner of Ammon and Hyde.
Hey, sorry, we've, I'm trying to multitask here. Will you say your name one more time?
Karen Betts.
Thank you.
And pretty much everything everybody said, it's like 99% of what I came up here for, but I was already in line, so I thought I better get up here and talk anyway. But if there could be a traffic study or something already, because we live on the corner, and it's quite busy, because we get almost everybody except for the people that divert to Jane, and the corner of Pine and Hyde is really tight, and emergency vehicles coming around that, it's, it's risky. Walking, I walk my dogs up to Ammon Park, around, around on Homer and down, and we don't have any sidewalks, we don't have the capacity to increase the foot traffic for the kids. A lot of kids already walk there, and, you know, they have to walk on people's lawns, or they have to walk on the other side in the street. And... And with increased population, it's just gonna be such a danger. But, and, you know, also we've witnessed several accidents, right, even on our little corner, where people are cutting the corner and they hit somebody head-on because they've taken over the wrong lane. And our neighbor right across from us at the end of Ammon Street on Hyde, we've seen cars in their yard. We've seen cars sideswipe their, their son's car and, you know, continue on and then have to turn around. So if we increase that, that, those risks are just gonna get higher and higher. So we would really, really, really impress upon you to consider those things as well as everything everybody else has said. Thank you.
Thank you.
When he's speaking, feel free to sign in.
My name's Mike Sampson. I live at 193 Charles Place, just up above this proposed development. And first of all, I'd like to, most everything I've got to say has been, has been covered by people here and before previously. But I think we would be very hard-pressed if you ask anyone, pulled anyone in the Poplar neighborhood or the Ammon neighborhood, whether they wanted to be connected with this road that goes up there. I overlook, my house property overlooks the, on the next ridge over where the new City, City Creek, or City View development has been approved and has been started. And connecting Lander Street and Elm Street there that they've done has greatly increased the traffic that people want to drag race on and totally abuse that street. I know there's not a lot of homes built there yet and a lot of traffic, but it's a roundabout that people like to, that will be barreling through there. And people there have bought those, that property because they like it private and they like it the way it is. Addressing the park issue, the same thing. It's a nice, quiet, very private, more or less undeveloped park. And you build 85 townhouses around it and that's gonna change drastically. I think it's been understated how much this increased holding pond will affect the, or how much of a change it will affect at the entrance and at Ammon Park there. I think it'll drastically change it. Traffic issues, I know have been addressed here. The Ammon, excuse me, Ammon, Hyde intersection there, I know that was told that it was a people issue and not a design issue, but you can start slowing down very, much before that and still slide. It must be a road control issue with snow removal and that then. The other issue that I have is with the new townhouses or with the other subdivision that's already been developed. I'd like the arterial traffic patterns to be greatly considered going through, down either to Poplar Street and that junction there. Or basically, the more, more importantly, is what happens to the traffic at Green Acres when you come down through, off of there and into Green Acres? If anybody's been there at the time.
Hi, my name is Heidi Stifler. And I live directly across this park sign on Ammon Street. And my grandparents actually had that house built in 1957 is what's carved into our cement going into our bomb shelter under our yard. But, so we bought the home from my grandparents. In turn, my twin boys loved the neighborhood so much because they grew up feeling safe enough to think the park was their yard. We had to tell them, no, it's not your yard. That when they were old enough, they bought the house at the end of Ammon Street at the top of the road. And now that they have their spouses, one bought Kitty Corner right on Homer Street. So I'm spokesperson for my entire family. It's a neighborhood. It's small. They bought there because they liked the small feel of the neighborhood. And I understand growth. And so my husband and I were thinking, well, it wouldn't be bad if they developed across the park, maybe 10 homes, single-family homes. But when we found out it was going to be rented apartments, that really got us concerned. I'm gonna start having grandchildren soon that live at the top of the road. There's no sidewalks. I don't want them walking down to my house or to the park with 88, 86 new apartments across the way with all the increase of everything that that brings. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynne Zoner. And I live at the other end of Lakeview, so the curve of Lakeview and Hyde. And it's been my experience that people ride along that curve, they cut it off. They don't look for the other car coming, coming the opposite direction. And so I see that the increase of traffic with this development might increase the risk of accidents at that curve. And with my house being right there, it increases my concern of anybody that might be visiting me or by, whether their car is parked on the street or if their kids are outside playing. And so that concerns me. I also, because of the situation of my house, am concerned about the lower Hyde and Pine, that same curve, because the same, the same issue occurs there. And so there's potential for more accidents in those two areas. Also, the visibility down Hyde connecting to Poplar. People that park on the side of the car, there is not, they, or on the side of the street, sorry. People that park on the side of the street, there is no, no parking zone indicated at the intersections on any of those streets connecting to Poplar. Therefore, the cars park as far to the corner as they can and the people coming and turning left cannot see the cars coming up the hill. And that is another potential accident spot. So I do oppose the development here. But if it is gonna go through, I would suggest to the city to maybe look into measures to help these situations. One of the things that I have learned is that by painting the proper lines on the roads, which several of these side streets do not have, that can help with the speed issues, that can help with the staying in the proper lane when you're making those curves. Also, the painting for the curb, no parking zones would be a help there. So that visibility is increased in those areas. Again, like I said, I oppose it, but if it's gonna go through, please look into those measurements to help with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marcy Gates. I'm a resident of Pocatello. And first I want to thank you guys for being volunteers. This can't be easy. But we have a developer from Utah coming in, creating a problem where there wasn't a problem. Not only with the traffic, with the pond, but what about the value of people's homes? And the second part of this that is so incredibly frustrating, and Michelle Holyoke brought it up, is why isn't the mayor and city council here to address all these people's concerns? Because, like she said, we saw what happened when you opposed South Fifth. And the same thing will probably happen with this. And it should be the mayor and city council here addressing all these residents with their concerns.
Hi, I'm Dylan Becker. I'm a resident on Ammon Street. A lot of these people here have already addressed a lot of the concerns I have. I just want to reiterate on some and then bring a few more to attention. Reiterating the traffic. I've got small kids. A lot of people in the area have small kids. It's tough to walk up and down the road without having any protection from traffic. I'd ask that if this does go through, that the city and the developers look into putting in sidewalks and giving the pedestrians safety from traffic. I can't count how many times I go to open my vehicle door and it almost gets hit, you know. That's a concern that I have. From my understanding, it's a 35-foot roadway at the current state. And in the Platts, it's slated for 50 feet across. So there is room for, you know, sidewalks to be put in. Another concern I have is for the sewage. That'll be running behind the houses on the west side of the park on the north part of Ammon Street. From my understanding, and maybe I could be corrected, but that development up above on Lakeview was put in in '56. And I would assume that there has not been any updates done to that sewage facility since then. A concern there is, you know, sewage backup. There's a lot more, you know, flushes per day essentially that are gonna be happening. And, you know, I would hate to see me or my neighbors have any sort of problem with any sewage coming into their backyards, possibly coming into their homes. Other than that, I just hope that, you know, our voices are heard and that these things get taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Talon Bannister. I appreciate your time. I'm gonna be brief. I'd just like to reiterate and underscore something that was brought up at the beginning that I think is a key thing to consider, is the incompatibility of this specific development project. I would love to be the one who had this opportunity to develop this and pocket this and gain and grow and build something beautiful. But I feel like this isn't taking into consideration the existing nature of the neighborhood. And we all know that change is inevitable and that something is going to go in here eventually as Pocatello runs out of room to expand its borders. Every dook and cranny will be filled. But I would just, as a lifetime resident of Pocatello, appreciate somebody who has a vision that is helpful to all those who are being impacted in that area who are longstanding residents. And I believe that if it were single-family homes, it would be a much better investment in the community and not some developer. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bonnie Hakestead. And I grew up on Ammon Street. In fact, Heidi Stifler is my daughter. And, and she lives there and now my grandkids live at the top of the street. When my dad built that house, there was nothing across the street. There was nothing on the hills up above there. The park wasn't there. The freeway wasn't there. The swamp was there. We called it the swamp. And it used to freeze over in the winter and we'd skate on it. But we always knew that something would probably go in on the other side of the park. But we assumed that it would be single-family homes. We never dreamed that there would be 86 rental units going in. I think traffic will probably be a problem and that will have to be addressed. But I really think that they need to look at the issue of maybe putting in single-family homes in that area rather than big apartment units. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Greg Cates. I want to thank you all for the job you do. And I appreciate the fact that you all opposed, well, most of you opposed, the South Fifth debacle. I see this whole thing as a for-profit disaster. The only people in this room that think it's a good idea is our city engineer, our city planner, and the land developer. It's, it's crazy. 86 townhomes in that small corner of this city? How, how long is this thing gonna take to build? How are you getting earth-moving equipment in and out of that neighborhood? That park is gonna be a dust field and a construction zone for two to three years. Affordable housing? How much are these things gonna cost? They haven't put one new condo or apartment in this city that's under 1,300 to 1,500 a month. This goes against the entire comprehensive plan this city put together and chartered you guys to protect. There's no collaboration with the, with the citizens here, no holistic approach. Utah developer's gonna come in and destroy that neighborhood completely. It's gonna lower the property values. It's gonna increase crime. Quality of life is gonna tank in that neighborhood. So don't do it.
Thank you.
My name's Cheryl Linford. And I grew up on Ammon Street. My son, my children grew up on Ammon Street and now my grandkids are as well. The other day I was watching my grandson with his dog and the car, the trucks from the construction zone are going up and down the street extremely fast. I have gone several times to tell them to please slow down. That is the biggest problem I see right now.
Did you sign in, ma'am?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucille Linford. I have lived on Ammon since 1969. And it's been a wonderful street. We have loved our neighbors. They've all loved each other. And they've all helped to raise little children together. It's been wonderful. But now there's several things I've thought about today. One of them is this pond at the bottom of the hill that they're thinking of. The little children use their remote-controlled cars and they push them down. They go up and down and they love that park. And that part of the park was made so that they would have a small area to walk on. They wouldn't have to go up hard for, you know, to climb up or to do it. And another thing is I'm concerned about the two entrances to the park. The one up on Lakeview, you go down that street to the end and it's a sharp turn and down. And I'm afraid someone would get killed on that. It's, it's not a safe area, especially if they drove at night. On the Ammon Park, this side, it, it is my concern. When we bought the house, they said that it was an earthquake area, that we could have an earthquake in our area. And we haven't worried about it. There have been a couple of times when they thought they were going to have one, but we didn't get one. And, but it could happen. And my concern is if there's that many people all in that small area and only two entrances to get out, I am concerned about them. And my other thing that I'm concerned about is now we're gonna get 80 families, maybe, and we have to have a new school. There won't be enough room in Greenacre School and Tendoy and to take that many children into concern. So we'd need to build a new school to help this area to grow. And I, I love my family. I love my neighbors and I love the city. So I hope that they will consider this because these people are very, very loving people up on that hill. They all help each other. So I'd hate it to change. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you want to sign in while he's talking, that'd be great.
It's cold in here.
It went from hot to, feels good to me, but it was hotter.
Hi, my name is Ron Brewster and I live at 195 Charles Place. I've lived up there for 45 years. And so I know Ammon Street very well, Hyde. And these areas like this, they're, they're quiet. And they build a bunch of new townhouses and apartments on Ammon Street and to the very end of Ammon. All of this traffic is flowing down. This is a smaller street and it all funnels down to where it stops. You either go left or right on Hyde. And now we've got the new subdivision that they built over off of Lander to Elm. That traffic's flowing down to Hyde Street. And so you've got all this flowing past Greenacre School. You've got you know, I mean, it's rough hillside and all that. But I think in there, if they could put in larger lots with nice houses, maybe an HOA in there to make sure everybody keeps it nice, in the park, the traffic would be less. The amount of influx of students on Greenacres would be less. All the way around, it seems like the overwhelming response of the people is that they are against this, and I'm one of them. So that's what I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Hewitt, and I live at 158 Charles Place. So one concern that I have that has not yet been addressed, correct me if I'm wrong, because blue lines are our water lines, correct? If they cut into those water lines, my house is going to be affected with pressure. I'm at the top of the hill. We're the last street off of Ammon. If those lines add 88 more complex apartments, what's going to happen to my water pressure? Water doesn't flow really well uphill. My water pressure will be affected, and that is a frustrating thing for me. Again, I'm with everybody else here. Everything that's been said is exactly mirrored what I feel. What it boils down to is when they are finished with their construction, they will leave, and we will have to deal with whatever is left. We will have to deal with all of the outlaw that they claim is premeditated worry. We will have to deal with it. They will not. Plain and simple. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Victor Watts. I just noticed the city's had a couple lawsuits, one with the land strip, another million-dollar lawsuit with the, I think it was the garbage fee or something, wasn't it? Anyway, so will the city suffer another million-dollar lawsuit when a developer can use public land for storm-water runoff? What page can we reference for this in which this is allowed? I'd like to see that. Another thing is dogs, probably if any water goes into this pond, which I haven't seen, but now that you're building houses with roofs and roads versus a natural environment that absorbs the water, you probably will have runoff. Will these dogs be drinking antifreeze, oil, lawn pesticides in this retaining pond? It's going to be five times larger, which seems ridiculous. I mean, if you look at the pictures, it's huge. The housing density is three times larger. If you look at the map compared to the neighborhoods around, it's about three times bigger. I can't believe that the city council allowed...
Make sure you're addressing the commission, please.
The mixed use, I mean, from a low density to a medium or higher density, it just shouldn't have happened. The Utah developer is also stealing our youth. As a kid, I trespassed on this land for years, riding my dirt bike, having dirt-clawed fights, read my first dirty magazines in a big hole up there, ran across snakes. And even though I was trespassing on their land, I was a kid, and I think that you shouldn't just trade money for things that are...
Address the commission, please.
For profit. You could easily build less houses in this area and still make profit.
Thank you. Will you turn the page over? Actually, I think it's on the next page. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, that would be great. And will you do me, I'm secretary now, will you just draw a line between the last guy and this guy so I know where that last one goes? Thank you so much.
So my name's Chuck Meisner. I live right across from Ammon Park. A couple concerns is, my main concern is, we're going to give rights through our park to a Utah developer for their profit. I don't think that's right. I don't think that they have the buy-in to our community that we do. That's a huge concern for me. I know how the construction can be so filthy and dirty, and who's going to clean all that up? It's going to be our tax dollars, not Utah's tax dollars cleaning that up. Another concern is, they put some apartments or townhomes or whatever up the street, up at the top of Ammon. We've talked about the speed humps or speed bumps or whatever. Well, I unintentionally got one in front of my house that runs east to west, and every time I pull out of my driveway, I go over it. My daughter's tripped over it, carrying her babies to the car. That's a huge concern. I've called the city two months ago about it, and it's going to be our tax dollars. Probably have to clean it up, not whoever the developer is that their, whoever their contractor was laid the cement in front of my house, so it's a huge ridge. So I have, I just, I have some concerns with the construction and who cleans up, and I just feel like it's going to be our tax dollars that helps line Utah's, that the Utah developers' pockets, and that's unfortunate.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to provide testimony opposed? If you order pizza.
Most everybody wants to talk...
Tell us your name, please.
Dave Gardner, and I live on Lakeview. The thing everybody wants to talk about Ammon, and I agree, Ammon's a problem, but when you look at this map, half of it's going to come out on Lakeview. It's ridiculous to get out of Lakeview as it stands because, all right, I noticed they added a new stop sign. I've lived there almost now 45-plus years. There's a new stop sign. Is that because of this that's, you know, on Placid? I don't know. Anyway, it takes all these turns to get down to Jefferson, and Jefferson is already coming off of Lakeview is a problem. Everybody talks about Ammon, but if you look at the map, half of it's going to come out on Lakeview. It's going to be a zoo. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Naomi Hewitt. I live up on Charles Place. But the concern I see is they're trying to connect the two neighborhoods with that one road through the townhouses. If you've ever lived in a nice apartment complex, they're going to want it gated eventually. They will gate it. So instead of having this whole big community connected, you'll have three different neighborhoods, this one secluded in the middle with gates, and all the problems that everybody's already brought up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wyatt Brammer. I live up on Jackson Place. Purchased home in 2018 in the expectation that this subdivision would be done and dealt with as of 1960 or whenever the last ones were built in there. Purchased it with the access to the park. We were looking for something that was close, quiet, and here we are seeing something that is very much not that. Upon finding out that it was going to be pushed in from developers from out of state, that does cause me concern, not for the out-of-state portion, but because it's all just going to be rental property. These 86 townhomes are not going to benefit this community in any way, shape, or form. Talking about any of the traffic incidents and anything like that has been pretty well beat to death now. But just moving into that, if we were to establish housing, that'd be great. We see the developers over here shaking their heads when people call them apartments. They will be treated as such. I know they're going to be townhomes, but it's going to be a facade. We can prevent that from occurring, I think we'd be in better shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed? All right. With that, I would like to invite the applicant up to rebuttal. And while he's coming up, I would like to state that these gentlemen have been hired by the developer. They're here livelihood, making sure they could feed their families. So let's not point and look at them. They're just here doing their jobs.
Joel Dixon, Canoe St. Engineering, 609 Weston Maple Street, Pocatello, Idaho, 802-001, representing the applicant. First, I just want to thank all the commission members for doing this, volunteering your time. It's greatly appreciated. You guys have a valuable position in society to mediate all this, and I have great respect for the public process. I'm proud to be part of a community where we have this freedom to come and talk about different developments that come in, and it should be taken seriously. And you also have a very serious and steep responsibility about balancing property rights versus public community. And what we've decided as that community is that we need to base our decisions off of what's in the code. So we have looked at different ways of getting this project done, conforming to the topography, balancing density, profitability, and just making a good product for the community, something that we can be proud of. I want to touch on some of the topics that were brought up a lot. Number one was the traffic. Yes, every development has added traffic. A lot of the concerns that have been spoken of are outside of our control, and we really cannot, and we can't decide what's done really outside of the bounds of our project, and we don't have the capability or the funding to do those either. It's just not something that we can do. Another thing that was talked about is pedestrian safety. One thing that our project does to increase pedestrian safety is, right now, is it was mentioned that there's not a lot of sidewalks. There's not a lot of areas delineating pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic. And this road that we're installing does have sidewalk. It's going to have a crosswalk on Ammon. It's going to identify places where pedestrians can walk and where cars can't be. It is going to start to increase the safety of those, both types of traffic. Another one was rental versus ownership. So this project is, it's going to be set up to be either-or. A person can buy an individual lot, a block of buildings, then they can either live in them, or they could rent them out. Some of them might end up being retained by the developer. There are some comments about they're just going to make as much profit as they can leave, but if they were going to rent them out, they have a vested interest to make sure that the development is successful. Another few comments were about them from being outside of Pocatello. A lot of the members of the LLC have grown up here, spent a lot of time. There's been discussions about watching the interstate being built and sneaking on and messing around with the equipment out there. So they, a lot of the members do have roots here. They've gone to school. They have friends that have come here. They enjoy the recreation of the town. So we're not just distant from this area. We do, both the engineers and the developer, they want to see this done correctly. That's why we were working with Parks and Rec to do some sort of amenity. We want this to be successful, not just for us, but for everyone. There were a few more, but kind of few and far between, but I would like to just make myself available for any questions that you may have, or if there's some specific issues you'd like me to address, I could do that as well. I would just ask you, you approve this as, with the conditions in the staff report, and allow us to proceed with our development?
Commissioner, any questions for the applicant?
I just have one.
Okay.
It's probably late, and I've read this and don't remember, but it was brought up, the concern about turning into what right now is the dirt road into Ammon Park. And I know when I drove there last night, it is narrow. Is the plan, if this were to be developed, for that, that's going to be two lanes, one coming, one going? It's not going to continue to stay that really narrow one lane? Is that correct?
The only part that we'll be modifying is the portion that goes north.
Right.
We won't be doing any Ammon, and that's going to be that 40-foot section.
Straight up.
Yep, all the way through.
And that should be adequate for...
That'll allow for two-way traffic and a parking or a bike lane.
I could have just been a terrible driver last night and like take over the whole...
No, this will delineate a path to travel. Right now, it's just kind of a gravel access, no man's land, and this will give it a little bit more structure.
Thanks for the clarification.
No? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Staff, I have questions. Everyone. Matt, Merrill, probably Merrill. Sorry, Merrill. Well, actually, Brent, do you want to start with going through the process quickly for us?
Brent McLean, Planning Development Services Director. So I know there was a question asked about next steps. Where does this go? So as we've talked about, you are a recommending body to the city council in this meeting. So you will make a recommendation that will go to the city council. The applicant has the opportunity to choose if they want to proceed to the city council for final decision on the proposal. So whether you recommend approval or denial, they can take it to city council, and it will be heard at city council, and it will be a public hearing, just like it is tonight, where you'd have an opportunity to speak to the city council. So that's the next steps with this application. So it's, obviously, the final decision isn't happening tonight, and if it does go to city council, the application will be noticed, just as it has been, with adherence to Idaho Code. And so keep your eyes open and talk to each other, and I do recognize that 300 feet sometimes seems small, but that's what code is, and that's what we follow, and that's what every community in Idaho follows. And so, but the next step, if the developer chooses, is to proceed to the city council.
And so city council and the mayor are not here tonight because they're going to have the opportunity to hear it.
Exactly.
And they, we don't, we don't want their, they'll be able to hear you all through that process.
That's exactly right. So they don't come to the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings on purpose because it creates a conflict later on if there's something that gets appealed. And so this is the time for the planning commission to make a recommendation without them present, so then it can go to the city council for the same due process.
Okay. Thank you. 86 new townhouses, or 40 homes, safety reasons, most likely those roads are going to connect. Is that a true statement?
That would be a true statement because of the emergency services in these areas in our hillsides, that it would be connected.
And then the other question I had is, so currently, right now, there's lots of runoff over the developer site, the privately-owned site, that right now, because it's undeveloped, probably infiltrates a lot to the ground as it's moving down, making the pond, I'm sure it gets water in it, they just don't notice as much, but in those smaller storms, it's probably evaporating, infiltrating before it's getting to the pond. And then when they build, and there's more impervious area, there's, it's going to streamline it, although it will go through other ponds. So there will be a little bit more water in the pond than previously. The four times as much seems quite high. Have you looked at that report, and what are your thoughts on that?
We've, I've looked at that report to that point of what they've got. We will be refining that by the time it gets to the final application also. You're correct in that where it is more permeable out there, a lot of it may be going into the ground using, you know, the vegetation and that that's there. You build roads, you do roofs, and there will be more runoff. And that's why, if you look at the pond system on the, in the application, and there is a, there's a pond system inside of their development to take care of their development as well as the second pond at the bottom that we're asking to be dedicated to the city. Those volumes will take care of the added volume, and then they need to take care and pass the... pass the other volumes safely through. So the other volumes coming off of I-15, on the east side of I-15, they've got to be able to pass those supposedly safely through the system. As you start piping there, there are catch basins along the proposed roadways that will take care of the drainage that way, and then also trying to look for that 100-year overflow, and how we're going to take care of that. This is no different than any other development we do in Pocatello. And there are instances, for instance, they say we're using the park for drainage, but we're also requesting that the existing drainage be taken care of in the park that has already been taken care of there. So, and that's what we're, as a city staff, and in our regulations that we try to do at that time.
Is it correct that the developer will be required to do a full-blown study, create a water model, analyze the pressures, do all the calculations to make sure that there's a capacity of water to come to this site, and that it's not going to take away from any of the neighbors or change their pressures or anything?
They do a water model, and then we check it against the bigger water model that we maintain and take care of. The pumps that are there actually pump the waters to the tanks. We are different than a lot of different cities, even as far as Chubby. Chubbies run off of pressure tanks and so forth that way. We do gravity. So this line, the pumps was brought out as the transmission lines that are there, will pump them to the tanks, and that's where they go, and pressures come down through there. Water pressure should not be affected at all with the added units here. The two light blue squares there are pressure-reducing valves, so they ask about the pressure. That's where their pressure's coming from, and those are already set at a certain pressure coming off of the tank, which we call the Cedar Tank across on the west side of the I-15. That will remain the same, that one pressure going across their property, bisecting their property that was brought out, that will be relocated down by the road, and then that water line will be put in the roadways for maintenance, so they'll be in the public right-of-way. And as was brought up earlier about maintenance and everything, we do not put things in easements anymore as we possibly can. It's very exception when they go into easements, try to get everything in the right-of-way. The old style with putting stuff behind homes and in alleys in the Alameda area, for instance, we are going through, and some that, not in this particular area, but down further in the bird streets and the tree streets and a few of those, in the last few years too, we are relocating those main lines into the roadways and reconnecting there and abandoning them in the alleys and behind, because they are so hard to maintain when everybody has their sheds there, their fences and so forth. So in the last, probably 30 years that I've been doing this, we've been making changes for that and for long-term maintenance.
Commissioner, any other questions for Merrill? We could have Matt come up also if we need.
I have one quick question on the ponds. Is it true, then, that the current pond at Ammon Park is smaller than what it needs to be with or without development?
If you were to run our manual now and use the, what is needed, runs down through there, it is undersized currently.
In the future, whether this is developed or not, would there be a plan to extend that?
No, we would not be doing that. The development pays for development, and that's why the development and the areas to do this, and it has been done in other areas of Pocatello too. It's not just Ammon Park. When parks are done and then development and that, and if there's some amenities that need to be fixed and increased because of what the development is doing, we have them do that. And some of them's been done in parks, in private property held by the city.
Yeah.
For that to take place.
And is it true also that Pocatello has other retention ponds that are strictly owned by the city, but may be catching water from other developments? I think an example that comes to mind is when Clark and Center converge, and there's some retention ponds up towards the hospital. I believe those are city-owned.
Those are in ITDs right-of-way, but we maintain them. If you notice there, the dips and that, the same, kind of the same principle that they're doing in their central park.
And it's to retain from the development.
There, and that is there. It comes off of I-15, it comes down through, and if you go with any development, they're required to follow the Portinone Valley Stormwater Design Manual that we go into in this instance, because it is all retention, it is designed off the 100-year event.
Okay, perfect. I just was, I know Ms. Noble had a question about if there was precedent for that already, and I just wanted to try to establish if that was.
There has been precedent, and we have used that in several areas.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to clarify. You stating the pond is undersized is based on the current manual used to do storm water calculations and the current code for what storm we use.
That is correct.
It doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, you guys have already said you don't see water in it a lot, so I just want to clarify that. According to current standards and requirements, it would probably be undersized.
And we do have, they said drained within 48 hours. Our manual is also 48 hours to be able to be drained, because that is the, kind of the reoccurring storms typically. A lot of them, we get back-to-back or generally within 48 hours of each other for our, it's Storm Two hydrographs that we go into and use, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. With that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Some, I'm just going to share my thoughts. We have these seven items they need to meet in order for it to be a PUD, and we already know they don't need one. I mean, to me, that's just like, you don't meet them. I do not believe that there should be an exception for them to go into the sloped areas more than what anybody else would be allowed to do. There's, that, the PUD does not say you don't have to follow the slope requirements. I think those should still be required, which would reduce the number of houses, which would create more undisturbed area, which would help with there being less than 20 feet of elevation change from where they start and where they end. So I think that's something that is very important to think about. I think that the storm water that comes from these historical drainage areas and have been going to the park, I think that that amount of storm water should still go to the park. I think anything extra created on their site because of their development needs to be kept on their site. And I don't think, it's going to be super, super hard, I understand this, like, try and keep those systems separate if you can. And I know Parks and Rec is already at their limit, and so even having this extra retaining pond that's on their property and then given to the city, it would be their requirement to mow this and make sure it continues to retain water. And I think if they follow the slope requirements, it's going to limit, it's going to reduce the amount of storm water that increases. I think those are all, I mean, they all are playing into one another. I think the road's going to go in no matter what's built up there. There's going to be a looping road, it has to be there for safety. We've seen other places, other areas where that's just not allowed, or has to be there. Those are just, those are, those are my thoughts on this.
I agree.
Any other discussion, or?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to say, first of all, I grew up in Ammon Park, playing there, shadow ball with Lucille's boys. I understand what this community is saying. It is a nice, quiet neighborhood. It's a wonderful place to buy a house, a wonderful place to live, especially for the people that just bought this last week. I mean, that is quite a, quite a blow to them. I also, on the other hand, you know, we had part in the comprehensive plan, the 2040 comprehensive plan, and I think a lot of parts of this go towards what we're trying to shoot for, for the plan. In my opinion, the density is way too high for the area, and that's, it's just, I mean, I believe that's pretty much the consensus of the room here. I like the medium density, the designation that it has now. I think that would work out a lot better than what we have. One last thing I want to say on the other side of the coin is, rent in this town is ridiculous. I have a daughter that's paying 1,500 bucks a month for a two-bedroom apartment, she's working 60 hours a week to try and afford it. We need more housing in this town. It goes without saying. But not at the, I'm worried about losing the community feeling that we have in that Ammon Park area. I think it's something that needs to be followed up on a little bit more. I agree with you that the, we shouldn't allow the exceptions for this. It's, PUD's a PUD, and it should remain that same way. That's all I have to say.
I have some thoughts. I am adjacent to Ammon Park. I don't live in Ammon Park neighborhood, but I am not far, so I go, I'm in and out of this neighborhood, walking my dog on my morning runs. And I hear what everyone is saying, and I am familiar with what everyone is saying. I also believe strongly in the rights of property owners, and so this is a hard thing to try and balance. I guess, Crystal, I, that was my first thought, is could, is there a compromise in requiring the developer to meet, I don't remember if it was item number three or four, but basically open space? And from my question earlier, and when I'm not totally clear, and I don't know if staff could speak to this, I know we're out of the questioning period, so maybe not, but my understanding is that in order to get the best and safest road, they use the term retaining walls, and that just makes me cringe when I think of a road being built on retaining, any kind of retention, retaining walls, anything like that. So can we still get a good road that doesn't require retaining walls or something that could fail with that, with meeting that requirement? My understanding is that by not meeting that requirement, we were going to end up with a better road. And like you said, the road's going in there anyways.
Okay, so I think I can, so if this exact same parcel were on a flat piece of land, they would be able to build it out and still be required to have so much open space. Open space doesn't mean undisturbed. It means it's grass, it's common areas, things like that. So that's completely different from the undisturbed. Because there are slopes that are so steep, they should not be allowed to touch the property, period.
Okay.
And so they're wanting to change what is 1.59 acres down to 0.55 acres. So if you take that out and say you can't build on that, that's that many less houses, you can't touch that, that road will just be lower and on the less steep part, and most likely not need retaining walls.
Okay.
I'll speak for a second. It's a thankless job to come out here and voice your opinion and be a concerned citizen, so thank you. It's no longer a thankless job, I thanked you. It's thankless to be up here as well. Actually, you guys have been really, really considerate and kind, and thank you. We're spending time away from our families, too. I grew up in the area. My grandparents lived on Franklin, the 500 block. I see neighbors. I see people here that taught me how to cook and do all the things that I value as an adult now. So this hits my heart, it does. It's a hard balance, like these guys have said, between wanting to protect personal rights of the owner of the land. If I want to do something to my land, I want to do that. Granted, I live in an HOA, so I can't. But also respecting the community and what they want and need. I know that I don't want my children in an area that I am terrified for them to drown, to be, you know, run over by a car. Those things are scary. We value our kids, and I think as a community, I can see your heart, not only towards what you want personally, but what you want for your community. So thank you, I respect that so much, and I hope you know that we genuinely take that into consideration, as much as we're allowed to do. I want to respect our laws and codes. I don't want to sometimes respect our laws and codes. I want to follow them, or I don't, and I do. So saying there's an exception, I'm not sure I'm okay with that. I haven't seen anything that really swayed me so hard the other way that the exception's appropriate. I do think it's too high of a density, even if it's zoned as such. I recognize these roads aren't great as is. I can tell you, I've slid my car through that area, especially on Hyde and Lakeview, both, probably because of winter, and probably once or twice as a teenager, where I just didn't have the experience to understand how to handle the curves. So, yeah, it's, there's a lot weighing on me.
Do we feel like if we approve this without any exceptions, so just as they would be able to do as it is allowed by code, that that would drastically affect the property owner's rights to develop their property? Can anyone?
Knowing the requirements of that property.
I mean, I think they are asking for, so the PUD is in place mostly so they can do law-size averaging. Well, they've done that, and then on top of that, they want an exception so that they don't have to have as much undisturbed area.
Yeah.
And that's not part of an agreement with a PUD. And I think following that code requirement takes care of some of the other problems of their reasoning of why they're doing things the way they're doing. And I would definitely agree with the gentleman who said he also thinks that it takes into account number four, because it's compatible with the adjacent land, and it's, I mean, if they're having to use adjacent land for some of it, then obviously it's not compatible within their property. And I don't, I don't think there's a way to say that we approve it, but you have to change this, this, and this. I just, it's too much. It's too much, I'm afraid.
You're not asking for exceptions. I mean, we're taking a look, taking a look at just what we're seeing right now. I mean, is this a time for you to kind of give your opinion, or is it time?
Yes.
Well, I didn't know just quite how it works. I haven't been to one this large, but quite honestly, I'd love to see this project go forward, but I'd like to see single-family homes, bigger lots, homeowners exemption, or homeowners association, and have, you know, anyplace else, you would have a common area, you would, you would have an area, you could have your own park, you know, small park in your neighborhood, you could, they could pitch in on this. And if we had 25, 30 homes, we're not going to have 172 cars parked out there. And that's figuring two per unit. It's just too much congestion, and it comes down to a, it's like a funnel. You got two ways out, and I took Lakeview, and it is, it's a pretty sharp corner in there, a lot of, it's scary. And I live real close to myself. I'm at Hyde and I'm at Hyde and Elm, right behind Greenacre School. So we're going to have Hyde traffic going to the south, we're going to have school traffic. I just think we're just funneling too much in this area, but I'd like still see it improved and have improvements on it.
It is a lot. Like, I think we've all qualified ourselves as being familiar with this area. That being said, there was extensive research done on it by a developer that was paid money and by our city staff, and both of the numbers check out, that it's not out of compliance.
With the exception of the one area being out of compliance.
Yeah, number three, and I'm sorry, I was referring to traffic.
Gotcha. Traffic's a, a separate, and yet the same issue. It's going to be impacted, it's not the developer necessarily that can fix it. So I see that. I also see that demanding the developer to do single-family homes, I, I don't want my city telling me exactly what to do with my property. Again, I also know that we do need affordable housing, and a thirteen-hundred-square-foot home in Pocatello right now is still not affordable. I can't fix either of those things. I just go back to, I want to, I would rather follow the code or not follow the code, and, four out of five isn't five out of five, you know? I just, that's hard for me to stomach.
Crystal, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I'm good.
You talked about stormwater and, and maybe wanting to create some way to delineate the neighborhood, the, the new development versus what's already taking place. Can you think of a realistic way that that happens?
Well, the first way is calculations. You can do calculations to see, you can see what drainage areas are going what, and you can see what is not coming from this property, coming from above and going to this pond, and whatever volume that is, is what volume you make the pond. And then whatever is on this, coming from this property, you have a calculation for, and then you do what new impervious area they have, and you do a calculation for, and then the difference in those two, they have to keep on site.
Okay. If we approve it, do you want to make some, some type of, do you have a condition in mind?
I, like I said, I don't think there's, I don't think we can list all the conditions for this.
Yeah, I think there's too many, and there's too many things that would need to be re-engineered as far, especially in regard to the stormwater retention and...
You still have to go through an older neighborhood with narrow streets. Just being a renter, I'm just putting myself in their place. You're over here, you're coming out, you need to go to Jefferson and Alameda. Whether to try that, and then come home from Jefferson and Alameda, because that's where a lot of the traffic's got to go.
Yep.
I don't think I'd want to negotiate that twice a day. I'd find a little closer place to have a rental, be a little more convenient.
We should consider, too, though, that there's no guarantee that all of these will be rentals. There is the possibility that they're going to be purchased townhomes and...
Yeah, they'll, they'll be rentals, they will.
I negotiated a lot, so I, I see what you're saying.
I think it's also important to remember what is our responsibility here. And, and we do hear all of these comments, and we do think, ah, that would suck if that was us, I don't want, you know, that to happen in my neighborhood. At the same time, a, a person who owns that property says, here's what I want to do with it, can I?
Yeah.
And, and we have to hold what they're asking up against the code. And, and I don't, as hard as this is to say, because I, I've heard what everyone said tonight, I think we have to hold it up against the code and just say, this is what you can do, this is what we'll allow. There's a lot of questions I still have, but as far as what we're here to do tonight, I would feel comfortable approving this without the exception to, we need to find this out for sure, but without the exception that they're asking for.
And if we don't do that exception, then it changes the whole entire plan.
Yeah.
They're going to have to start over anyways.
They'll have to re-map everything.
Brett's got something for us.
Sorry, the public hearing's closed.
I don't see what, what changes it could do.
I just want to reiterate what Crystal is saying, that without the exception, the development as it stands wouldn't be able to happen. And so if you don't approve the exception, they would have to reconfigure and re-figure out, you know, how many units they can actually put in there, what are the real stormwater calculations based off of that. So if you choose to approve it, you need to approve it with the exception. A condition of approving it without the exception, it does, it, it won't be the same development, and so it would need to come back to the board to, to, to look at that again. So if, if you are uncomfortable with that exception, I would recommend that you deny it without, because it, it, it won't exist as it is unless there's an exception, and that's what Crystal's trying to say.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's an option of, of trying to approve it and move forward without that exception.
Okay.
I think it's clear that this doesn't meet the standards for a PUD. I also think it's clear, I mean, even without the exceptions, because of items three and four, I would entertain a motion to deny.
Just what exception are we thinking about?
Done. We're approving it or denying it? We have a motion to deny it?
I'd like to motion to recommend denial of the Park Place planned unit development from CMJ Holdings, finding your application does not meet the standards for approval under chapter seventeen dot zero-two dot one-four-zero of Pocatello Municipal Code, finding that, and authorize the chair to sign the findings as a fact of recommendation.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Frye and a second by Guyer. Aisling, will you call vote?
Frye?
No, hang on. So if, he has made a motion to deny it, so if we vote yes, we're saying we agree with the denial. Okay, continue, please.
Yeah, get that right.
Guyer?
Yes.
What, two?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Sedwick?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
All right. We're, we're not done, guys, we have another one. I do have one question for staff real quick. I know I asked this before, but then I just read this. Seventeen zero-two-one-four-zero D point three says subdividing of the land may not proceed until a proposed PUD has been approved. We, so do we need to wait?
Approved by the city council.
They can still take it to council whether you recommend denial or not.
Got it, okay. That was my question. All right, so we will now move on to agenda item number six, a public hearing for preliminary plat, file twenty-four dash nine-one-six. This time has been set aside to hear comments from the public regarding a preliminary plat application request by CMJ Holdings, represented by Joel Dixon of Knutson Engineering, to plat ten-point-three-four acres, more or less, into eighty-six townhome lots and two common open space lots. The subject property is zoned residential medium-density multifamily. The project is generally located north of Ammon Park, south of the Grove Apartments, and west of I-15. At this time, I declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to come forward. The applicant's representative.
Joel Dixon, Knutson Engineering, six-oh-nine West Maple Street, Pocatello, Idaho, eight-three-two-zero-one, representing the applicant, CMJ Holdings, for the preliminary plat application of Park Place Townhomes. Could I just say ditto?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I do want to just kind of stick, ditto plus. So moving forward with the preliminary plat, where there still is a opportunity for council to still approve it, I, I see two routes. I, I talked very briefly with Brent, is that it could either be same thing, denial, and then if we wanted to move forward, we'd have to do an appeal, or you could say, if it were approved, contingent upon the PUD being approved. And then that would leave it up to the city council to decide. If city council upholds your recommendation, it would just save us from having to file an appeal, but either way, if the city council was going to approve it, I, I see them approving the appeal as well. So that's just kind of the two routes, is either deny or approve contingent upon an approval of the PUD. I'm just spitballing to try to see about just saving some additional applications. So just your thoughts on that, and then the ditto stuff.
Any questions regarding?
I think we've asked it all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, you're just going to say ditto, too?
You can say ditto.
I did. I'll bang it louder.
I think we know what, what the development is, and so if you have any questions, I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will open it up for testimony. You guys know all the rules, you did a fabulous job, and I just want to say I recognize the green, I recognize that. Good, good, good play. Anybody who is providing testimony in support of the application? Anyone providing testimony uncommitted? Anyone providing testimony opposing the application?
So they're talking about subdividing the land.
Will you state your name, please?
Victor Watts. One thing I'd just like to know is, Merrill said that the stormwater, there's drains in the, in the road that comes down, and the, the water's going to drain directly into the stormwater grates, and then directly into the pond at, pond at Ammon Park. So it's going to bypass any land there. And again, I would emphasize that any rainwater that's created by the roofs or the street that's in this new development, stay on the property of the private developer, not the, the public park, because I can easily see this pond becoming fenced off. We're going to lose that part of the park. And I know little kids, they slide in that little area, the toddlers, and I'd hate to see the city lose that. But again, I think the stormwater issue is a big deal, and maybe he can address that. Is the water going to come straight into that? Also, the transfer of that piece of land, is it going to happen before the deal or after the deal? Like, is this contingent on that land being given to the city, so the city has to pay to maintain it and all that? I mean, it seems like there's a little fishy, kind of like, oh, I'll do this for you if you do this for me, you know, kind of back and forth thing, so if you guys could address that or look into that, get the fine details of that, that would be great.
Anyone else opposed? I know you all are saying ditto, I know that. But anybody like to come up? Not really. It's ten, it's ten oh nine. No, we, we heard, we heard all of you guys, so, okay, rebuttal? Nope. Merrill, could you just do a quick, and, quick on the stormwater? And maybe your slide that shows the system, is it, it's okay, don't worry about it. Will you just be clear about the stuff that's coming from up above, how it's going to flow through, and the stuff that's created, how it's going to flow through?
I can tell you how the existing system is already done, that they've proposed, and no, it does not drain directly into the Ammon Park pond. The water, everything, if you look at that design, it all goes into, the majority of it goes into the central ponds, which is in between. All the stuff from I-15 on the two accesses that come in, it comes in and comes through the central ponds, and then from the central ponds, it would go into the second pond.
Thank you.
So there, so you've got, let's see, I-15, so you've got it coming down through here, there's a, there's an area that comes right down through here, that's the, the burrow, you would say, on the west side of I-15, that's there, and I don't want to do that. And then, then there's a pipe that comes down from this side, down by Farm Bureau and everything, and comes down and comes into sixteen, and you'll see this pond right here. Then you have a catch basin here, and a catch basin here, you've got catch basins here, all these catch basins up here on this upper end all drain into the central pond. So the, all the upper stuff is draining into the central pond. And then from there, it would drain into the pond that, that we are requesting that would be a city pond, they were going to keep it as the private. But again, the bigger ponds here, that is maintained and has taken the bulk of the, down through here, the roads, right here, and then taken this part of the actual roads, and then probably some of the roofs and that would go into here. From there, then whatever's overflowed, and that's what, this, this whole area in here and the area here in the calculations, takes all of the flow that has been added, plus a little bit more, if you look at the calculations, you look at the storm report of the I-15 and everything else that comes in, treats and takes care of stuff there, and then whatever overflow from these, and you got to realize that this is all designed on a hundred-year event, because this is retention. If it wasn't, it would be on the fifty-year event, and it would be into detention, where there's going to be a complete outlet going into the city system, and it doesn't, because Ammon Park was a dead-end system. We are going to ask for that overflow. So then that water, if it overflows, plus the water that's coming all down in this area, through, let's see, this is the, this is the Farm Bureau, sorry, this one is not. This one is a small, small area up along the pathway, the Montevista to Farm Bureau pathway right here, which takes just the hillside right here. I was wrong. This is the big gully that comes down, down through Farm Bureau, and one of the reasons why this doesn't take as much water, too, is because all of the development up above, there's been four ponds that's been put in by development, there's other ponds that's being put in on development up above, and then there's one at Farm Bureau and another one that was off with the spine center that was put in, too. So development is supposed to take care of, it's all stormwater. And then it comes down into this area here, and again, the percolation rates, evaporation rates or anything, but then there is that potential. Our stormwater, the Portland Valley Stormwater Design Manual, does take into effect that there has to be the over, the hundred-year overflow. So that's what's taking place. One of the things, too, to keep in mind is in two thousand, there was a stormwater utility fee that was trying to be put into place to take care of these things. That was overturned by the public. So there's your other fee there. It was proposed in the last there, too, as we're talking about stormwater, that maybe the homeowners' association ought to be putting in a bunch of money to take care of the Ammon Park pond, which, that's a great idea, too, so we could have an offside tax that's kind of questionable, whether we should be doing that or not. That's something to really think about. Are you going to tax a certain little group to take care of other stuff that is the city's and the overall public's responsibility for, for the drainage and that? I can tell you, here in the, in the future, it is being discussed again, and in the state of Idaho, there's been many stormwater utility fees that's been in place and that. And I'm going to, I'm going to say in the next few years, it's going to be inevitable because of our, our topography and everything here, that is going to have to take place to be able to maintain and take care of stuff. You cannot balance that on the general fund budget and other budgets that's been taking place. So as a, as a inside, knowing the last many years, and also as a tax... and also as a taxpayer of the city of Pocatello and being in development just like this, it's, I've sat and watched as, as stuff around my own house and my private little area in App Two is being, being developed, too. So I can understand the situation and the passion there. But also knowing that, that is, it is the rules. And I can tell you right now that with stormwater, you ask those questions. And this stormwater design does meet the Portnitz Valley Stormwater Design Manual for the 100-year storm.
Thank you. And one thing I just thought of, there won't be any runoff from the roofs. They have to keep it on their own property.
They're supposed to keep a lot of it on their own property. And a lot of the back roofs will drain onto the grasses and around. Driveways are a little harder. You know, there's, there's that balance point between it. And then just to say that, too, you know, we have the 100-year storm event. You can look back, what was it, about 10 years ago? The south end of town and everything had a 500-year event. There was no stopping it. I know that whatever happens, nature's going to prove us wrong.
Any other questions? No, okay, thank you. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. I would just like to start by saying this plat doesn't meet code. The same reason the PUD didn't meet, this doesn't meet. They're, they're asking for the same exception of being able to get into that undisturbed area, the 1.59 acres that they shouldn't be.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the preliminary plat application from CMJ Holdings. LLC finding the application does not meet the standards for approval under chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code. And authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact and decision.
I have a motion by Frye and a second by Fenwick. And again, when she calls vote, if you vote yes, it means you agree to deny it.
Repeat that.
If you vote yes, it means you agree to deny it.
Okay.
Yes, please call vote.
Yes.
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 And with that, adjourned.